Go through the -- yes, you have to.
They're expensive, I just want it.
Yeah.
It's hysterical.
We'll call the Committee of the Whole meeting to order for Tuesday, August 28th. First item is roll call.
Brown, Risotto.
Here.
Etac.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chancet.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Sumner.
Here.
And McFadden.
Here. All right. Necessary quorum to conduct business. And next up would be approval of the minutes for August 14th of 2018. Any comments? Anybody care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Stark, second by Uer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item is items to be removed, added, or changed. You have anything?
No.
No changes? Okay, we'll go right into matters from the public. And I was contacted earlier today by Chris Hasteen. We're going to add something that, just due to scheduling conflicts, they were coming up. I'll let Chris explain it.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Yes, we did have some scheduling conflicts in discussing and presenting to the Committee of the Whole a request for a grant application by John Happel, who bought the 129 South Batavia Avenue building, the former Stash's barbershop. You recall that we, the city ordered a grant, Mr. Happel, in 2017 for his comprehensive remodeling of that building. He has completed Phase 1, he's coming in for an application for Phase 2, but that's not all together yet, but we do have a situation where his wife, Dr. Mary Ellen Bratou, who's the principal beneficiary of the remodeling of the first floor and the storefront, is putting a business there. And she, because of scheduling conflicts, she cannot make the following Cow meeting. And so what we'd like to do is give her an opportunity to describe her business, make a short presentation about her intention to use the building, and then when we come to the Cow meeting with John and I to present the application itself, you will have at least learned from the horse's mouth, so to speak, about the business in question. Obviously, the program is principally targeting creating better spaces and improving buildings to generate more business activity, and that's exactly what's happening here. So without further ado, I'll introduce Dr. Mary Ellen Bratou. Thank you.
Vote.
Nope. Thank you, Chris, very much, and thank you to the committee for, is it okay to move this, is it okay to move the keyboard? Thank you for the accommodation. I'm glad to be here this evening and happy to tell you some about the Well Within Workshop. I'm Dr. Mary Ellen Bratou. I'm a licensed clinical psychologist in Naperville and the owner of the Well Within Workshop. I will try and keep this under 10 minutes, and my level of anxiety might make that very easy. And I thought it might be helpful to tell you a little bit about my background, so that the Well Within Workshop could be understood in that context. I have a bachelor's degree in art with a concentration in communication art and graphic design. I worked for almost 10 years as an art director in advertising in Chicago, working at two of the largest ad agencies in the country, developing national television and print campaigns for clients that included Anheuser-Busch, Frito-Lay, Procter &amp; Gamble, Hasbro, and many, many others. Somewhere along that line, I began to get a pull in the direction of the mental health field. It had been a longstanding interest of mine, and at some point, I decided to make the break. Applied to and was accepted to a doctoral program in clinical psychology in Chicago. And upon completing that program, I accepted a staff psychologist position at VA Lakeside Medical Center, where I provided direct clinical services to veterans, as well as supervision to psychology doctoral students and medical students and medical residents, supervision in the fine art of doing psychotherapy. I opened my private practice in 2000 on a part-time basis, split my time between the VA and my practice. And in 2003, I left my position at the VA to do private practice work in a full-time basis. All of my life, from the time I was a very young kid, through the teen years, and throughout two separate career tracks, I maintained a steady art-making practice. And I did that because I believe in it. And specifically what I believe is that creativity is directly connected to health and well-being and wholeness. I don't need any more convincing on that front. The Well Within Workshop was born out of that belief, and it is designed to support anybody who chooses to come there and explore that connection for themselves. So, let's see. Okay. So what is the Well Within Workshop? It's a private art studio offering unique creative experiences and opportunities for individuals and groups, where the nature of those activities are inherently health and well-being and wholeness supportive. And while the roots of these creative activities can be found in various fields of study, including anthropology, and biology, and sociology, psychology, and the neurosciences, the essence and spirit of the Well Within Workshop can be summed up in two words: Jed Clampett. You remember the story about a man named Jed? That poor mountaineer who barely kept his family fed? But then one day, he was shooting at some food, when up through the ground came a bubble and crude. I am convinced that we're all Jed Clampett. I'm convinced that we're all sitting on a well, only it's not oil. It's the well that lives within each and every one of us, the well within. And when we figure out how to tap it, it offers profound feelings of energy and vitality and aliveness, and it brings forward a feeling of wholeness. And all of those variables, energy, aliveness, wholeness, and vitality, forgot that one, are key components in health and well-being. Now, most folks say that daily living offers very few opportunities to tap the well within, what with the bills and the day job and the answering to too many people on too many digital devices. And that's where the Well Within Workshop comes in. It is a supportive creative sanctuary that will invite folks to come home to themselves in ways that many haven't done since they were young kids. And in doing that, people will be invited to use these, these 10 digits, the original digital devices. And in doing that, they begin to harness a creative force that is built into each and every one of us through millions of years of evolution. It's a force that allows us to discover our most essential selves. It's a force that makes the world larger. And surprisingly and delightfully, it lowers blood pressure, it lowers the stress hormones that are otherwise coursing through all of our bodies, it improves mood, it improves sleep, and it enhances a feeling of connectedness and community and belonging, particularly when these activities happen in the context of a group. So what are these creative experiences and activities that I'm talking about? They're a combination of classes, and practices, and readings, and field trips, but they all have two basic tenants in common. And the first is that they're predicated on the belief that creativity comes factory-installed in all of us. Despite many, many protests to the contrary, we are all inherently creative by nature. And the second tenant is that the Well Within Workshop promotes process over product, which means that the page or the paper is the place to have an interesting, enlivening, curious experience, rather than the paper or the page freighted with the burden of having to be a stunning work of art. Because the research is clear, for artists and non-artists alike, the health and well-being bang for the buck is identical. Talent is not the thing, it's in the making. Okay, so one of the activities that I'm going to offer at the Well Within Workshop is a series of practices. And I call them practices along the lines of meditation practice or a yoga practice. And one of the practices that I'm going to offer, and because what I'm trying to do is promote the idea of an art-making practice. And so one of the ideas for these practices is a mindfulness practice that uses watercolor paints. And I call this Water and Words. And I actually brought a flyer, just to give you an idea of what that's about. Let's see. I have another practice that uses a collage technique, and I call that Cut and Paste. There's a third practice that I'm, that takes place in a public library. Public libraries are just incubators of creative juices all the way around, and the idea that the Batavia Public Library is the stone's throw away from the building we just bought thrills me to no end. So one of the practices is going to happen there. So that's one grouping of the offerings, the series of practices designed to promote an art-making practice for participants in the workshop and in their own homes. Another offering, I am a member of a longtime intuitive painting group. This is a group of painters who meet from all over the country. The most recent painting, intuitive painting workshop happened in Wheaton earlier this month at the Burning Bush Gallery. So we had painters from California, and New Mexico, Arkansas, Massachusetts, Florida, and all over the Midwest. And what happens is, this group of people get together, they board planes, trains, and automobiles, they load up their unfinished painting and their brushes, and we descend on a location, and we paint together for five to 10 days. And it's an incredibly rewarding experience. It's got its roots in the work of Carl Jung, who's a Swiss psychoanalyst, and himself a practicing painter. So I find the experience incredibly rewarding. I've done it for many years, and of course, this would be available to anybody who would choose to explore what intuitive painting is all about. It's a different kind of painting. You go to the page, and you don't have any idea what you're going to paint. You just wait to see what comes, and then you paint it. No special talent needed. And then the third offering, since John and I acquired the building, I've been approached by a number of practitioners of various stripes who have their own offering. They've got their own classes and their own workshops, but they don't have a space. And so they asked me if I'd be interested in talking with them further about what they're offering, and I will have coffee with anybody who's offering a reputable workshop, or class, or practice that falls at the intersection of creativity, health, and well-being. And so, in conclusion, the Well Within Workshop is a supportive creative sanctuary that's designed to invite folks to come home to themselves, to learn how to tap their own well within, and to explore for themselves the connection between creativity, health, well-being, and wholeness, for their own mind, body, and spirit. And so I'm interested in whatever questions you would have, but before we do that, I just want to, I want to publicly acknowledge my husband, John Happel, without whose just unbridled vision and just the sheer force of his creative will. Without that, the Well Within Workshop, as I envision it, would not have been possible. So, thank you. Didn't want to cry, but, all right. Any questions?
Do you have a website or anything, if anybody wants to, this is on TV, or will be rebroadcast, so if you have a website, or phone numbers, or anything you want to give out while you're here?
I do, I've got a website. It's www.the welwthinworkshop.com. And I would welcome all of you checking it out, and if it offers you anything useful, please think about entering your email. I don't post all that often, and I try to make it something fruitful.
I have a question. Do you, are there age groups that you target, or do you welcome?
I envision across the board. Kids bring a great energy, newcomers, people who've been away from art-making, mark-making, I call it, for decades, they're fun. Sky's the limit. Thank you very much for your --
So, just so, one other question. So people who haven't had any inkling towards art.
Yes.
Still welcome?
Yes, because the thinking is, we all had an inkling toward art before somehow the notion of you have to be an artist to do that, and everybody else shouldn't do it. And that's what I'm hoping to respectfully challenge.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One question. So, you're a psychologist. Are any of these programs covered under persons' health insurance?
No.
Okay.
No.
Because I know there are programs that are out there for art therapy, and I didn't know if this was similar to those programs.
It's a common question, and the distinction I'll make is Linda Berry, who is a professor at University of Wisconsin in Madison, but she offers national writing workshops, and one of her writers was having a very wonderful experience and said something along the lines of, "This is just fantastic. This is like therapy." And Professor Berry said, "No, honey, therapy is like this. Therapy's new. This is old. We all come from ancestors who were makers."
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. On to next agenda item. It'll be the consent agenda.
You skipped matters from the public.
Oh, that was matters.
Oh, that was it?
Does anybody else have anything that's not on the agenda tonight that we should speak about? Okay, so we will now move on to the consent agenda. First thing on the consent agenda is Resolution 18-102, approving plat of easement and abrogation for lots. One of 8788 Batavia Business Park re-subdivision. B is ordinance 1858, amending the official zoning map of the City of Batavia, 1900 Hubbard Avenue, City of Batavia applicant. Anybody have any questions, comments? Make motion on the consent agenda? So moved. Motion by Chancet?
Second.
Second. Second by Stark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next up would be ordinance 18-56, amending the official zoning map of the City of Batavia, 620, 625, 629, 639, and 646 South Van Buren, 320, 322, 328, 336, 344, 428, 435, 451, and 511 Pine Street, Burlington Northern Railroad and adjacent right-of-way, City of Batavia applicant. Turn this over to Drew.
Yeah, so essentially, with the long list of different properties that are on the list for consideration tonight, essentially, there was three annexation actions that occurred in this area that created this area of default R0 zoning. So the proposed action, which was reviewed by the Plan Commission, would be to put the properties that have been recently annexed east of Pine Street into the R1L category, the R1M category for between Pine Street and Van Buren Street. And then the portion along the railroad right-of-way would be LI, light industrial, with the South River Street corridor overlay district as well. So with the Plan Commission's review, there was some conversation among, with one property owner that was subject to this zoning change, requesting just a conversation about why they were going into one category versus the others, and essentially, kind of how, if that would have any effect, especially from a tax standpoint was their concern. But the, after that discussion, the Plan Commission did recommend approval, and the ordinance tonight, in front of you, would approve the changes as presented to the Plan Commission.
Susan, this is yours.
Yes.
Yes.
So, is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak about this, any further? Okay. So, the council, this came to us from Plan Commission with a positive recommendation. The alternative is, is we can approve ordinance 1856 and zone those subject properties as proposed, or request the Plan Commission review, alternative zoning classifications, or reject the proposed change. Staff hasn't identified any negative circumstances to the action of approval, and as a timeline for action, there's no required timeline. If we send this to City Council, it will go on the City Council agenda for September 4th. Does anyone have any questions about this? This is really bringing these properties all into R zoning, and that was the primary reason for doing this. So it goes along with the rest of residential zoning. Marty?
A resident reached out to me about whether or not it would affect mortgages because of the way she understood things, and I referred her to you, and you did clarify that, and she understood that her understanding was, as the definitions were not correct in that situation, did not apply, correct?
Yeah, the zoning change shouldn't have any effect on the property taxes or anything other than a beneficial aspect of it. So if they have setbacks that are not conforming with the current R0 zoning, the zoning districts are all proposed to be less restrictive with setbacks, so it should help them. But the assessor assesses land value based on the use of the land, not necessarily the zoning of the property, so it should have no effect on their property values.
Anyone else? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to recommend ordinance 1856, amending the official zoning map of the City of Batavia, 620, 625, 629, 639, and 646 South Van Buren, 320, 322, 328, 336, 344, 428, 435, 451, and 511 Pine Street, and the Burlington Northern Railroad and adjacent right-of-way?
So moved. Okay.
Motion by, was it Malley?
Yes.
Thank you. Second by Chancet. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Going to put that on consent? Is that fine?
I think so.
All right. Next up will be ordinance 1857, amending the official zoning map of the City of Batavia for 750 through 812 Main Street, City of Batavia applicant. Susan?
Sure. So this is, has to do with the properties that are currently zoned LI, light industrial, and the ordinance proposes in the community commercial district. So Plan Commission conducted a public hearing on August 1st and 15th to review the proposed zoning map amendment. It was initially proposed by the neighborhood commercial district. The community commercial district was added as an option because this district was supported as an alternative by the owners of the properties. The east portion is owned by the Patterson family and covers .96 acres with a building at 750 Main Street, and a building with addresses of 768 through 786 Main. There are a variety of storage, as well contractor businesses that occupy this site, and the assessor showed the buildings on these properties contain 6,914 square feet. The west, approximately 2.56 acres, are owned by Ron Link, and assessors show that the building at 804 Main Street contains 18,200 square feet, while the building at 812 Main Street consists of 26,431 square feet. Batavia School District is using that building at 804 Main Street for offices and facilities management, and there's an accessory building there with approximately 2,000 square feet, and there is a staff memorandum that went to Plan Commission. So, staff recently has received inquiries from prospective industrial users for a portion of the property that would increase the intensity of use on the property, including outdoor use. Such uses would be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, and that's the focus for the area for West Town, in the West Town Tiffor redevelopment area, and a stark contrast from the relatively low-density, intensity use of the properties surrounding neighbors have experienced. With some leasing availability present, staff feels this is a reasonable time to consider changing the zoning district to encourage use and/or redevelopment more in line with these plans, or to discourage new industrial uses that may not be compatible with the neighborhood. So at the August 1st meeting, there were, there was some discussion by owners of the buildings. Staff has met with Mr. Patterson and his attorney to discuss the proposed zoning change. Subsequent to that meeting, staff received letters from attorneys representing Mr. Patterson and Mr. Link stating support for zoning the properties to the commercial district. At the August 15th hearing, two of the treaty court residents addressed the commission. One noted that Van de Vettener has been a good neighbor, and he expressed concern that the commercial district would allow for uses as, he had two parlors, pawn shops, garden supply stores that would be out of character, and he preferred the NC designation option. And statements of support for the CC district included identifying this district as a good compromise between how the property could be used with the existing light industrial district and more restrictive NC district option that could be pursued at a later date. So staff remains supportive of the CC district as presented in the original memorandum to the commission. And if redevelopment of these properties is to occur, the CC district establishes more restrictive transitional setbacks to residential than does the NC district, and nearly identical to those in the LI district. And so the setbacks are one of the main reasons, or one of the factors that staff is proposing that we have the more restrictive transitional, or the more restrictive CC district. So the alternatives for this are to rezone the property to the neighborhood commercial, the NC, rezone the properties to community commercial, or take no action and leave the current light industrial district in place. And there are a long list of pros and cons to this. Staff recommends, as did the Plan Commission, not amending the zoning map and leaving the LI district in place. So, oh wait, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Plan Commission recommended not amending it, but consistent with recommendation to re, okay, Drew, this is, I read this earlier, Joel. Sorry, Drew was up there first. I read this earlier, and this is what confused me about this. So Plan Commission recommended not amending it, but then, then the last line of this says, "Consistent with its recommendation," oh, "to the Plan Commission," at the public hearing. "Staff recommends approval of the draft ordinance 1857 to rezone the properties to community commercial district as presented."
Yes.
And so, staff recommends that we change the zoning. Plan Commission recommended we leave it as light industrial.
Correct.
Okay. That's, when I read that last line, I misread the wording. So, does anyone have any questions about this to Joel? Because it is, it's, it's an interesting piece of property. I can see why people would feel the way they do both ways. I think that leaving it as light industrial opens the door to potentially going out of alignment with what we're looking for in terms of the West Town area. And so I can see why we would want to make some changes to the zoning, but that's just my opinion. Does anyone else on the council want to address that? Nick?
Are there any imminent businesses that are looking for approval in either direction?
We have not had any inquiries in the past month or two, but before that, we had some inquiries of businesses that, or at least from one business, that was looking to go in, but the use was not compatible.
So, did we just say no to them, or did we look at possibly changing it for them?
No, we said no, that they could not look there, because it was a, more of a general industrial use, as opposed to what this is zoned for, light industrial.
So if a company were going to build, let's say, another foundry there, that would not be what this is zoned for?
A foundry, no, but other manufacturing could go in there, but not a foundry.
Yeah, and one of the issues just along that area is, there have been other businesses in it that did, I can believe, fit within the light industrial, and because of the nature of some of it being outside, especially at the south end of the west property, that backs up to what? west property, that backs up to, what, four or five houses right there? And I mean, they're literally 20 feet away from the fence. So it's really in their backyard. I would like to see it changed. I'd like to see something happen there because part of it has just sat abandoned and really just been a dump for 15 years. So it really needs to have something happen with it. And I think this is a possibility to maybe ignite something to happen there if this changes.
Well, I, I'm, just to expound on that. Would this opportunity have been able to move ahead if this change was in effect?
Which opportunity?
The one you, you mentioned, somebody did look into.
No, that would be a use that would be allowed in the general industrial district. The properties are currently zoned light industrial.
Joel, why did the plan commission support leaving it as it is?
I believe there was some, well, there was support for both the neighborhood commercial-
Yeah, I saw that.
... and for the community commercial. And they discussed it, and I think the, the, there was a question brought up, why are we proposing to rezone this now? And we tried to explain about the potential for future incompatible uses. And I believe the plan commission felt that there was no urgent need to rezone it. They did hear from some neighboring property owners who, who cited some negatives about the community commercial district as opposed to the neighborhood commercial district. So they probably felt that it would be best not to take any action and leave it as is because nobody was, nobody seems to complain about how the properties are being used currently.
I think one thing that I noticed with it is, right in the middle of the properties that are there, that are in question, is the school district. With a long-term lease on the building, and they're going to buy the building from Link when they're done with the lease, they're not going to go anywhere. It's pretty well-centered in their district. They like the facility, they like the layout, they like the space they have. It fits for what they want to do there. And, so you're not going to be able to clean sweep it from one side of the property to the other to start a redevelopment in that area. I just don't see that happening. So, to try to reuse those buildings, or any portion of those buildings, I don't think light industrial makes that happen, especially in that area.
Hey Joel, what do the residents, the neighboring residents, what's their feel on that?
Didn't, neighboring residents, they talked about the businesses there being good neighbors now. The, there was some discussion about not preferring the community commercial district because of some of the businesses that could go in. Pawn shop was mentioned, tattoo parlor was mentioned. They also talked about the neighborhood commercial district having limited hours of operation, which we do have in the code. The hours can be expanded by council approval of a conditional use, but without that, they would be limited to 6 to 11, I believe, 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Aren't things like pawn shops and tattoo parlors conditional use? Wouldn't those all have to be approved by city?
I'm trying to recall if they were conditional or permitted, but they are allowed there.
But it's like downtown. I thought it was.
If, if it would require, well, a tattoo parlor would require a license.
Right.
And if it does require a conditional use, then it would have to go in front of the city council. Being a conditional use, there are certain things that the city council can't consider, like limiting hours of operation, but there would have to be something particular about the proposed tattoo parlor to say no to it. Just a blanket no.
Right. But pawn shop, all of, all of the things that were concerns, it seemed to me that they were conditional use type things.
It's permitted.
Yeah, the, the pawn shops are permitted uses. There are some limitations on how you can operate them in the municipal code. And then the tattoo parlors are permitted use also, but they have licensing requirements for them.
Right. Okay.
And do we have different, we have something different going on for downtown and tattoo parlors, don't we?
Correct. Yeah, there's an actual limitation in downtown and DMU district on how many you can have, which is two.
So could we, to, to, to kind of allay the fears of the neighboring residents, can we change that to?
You can do a text amendment to change any uses you want in a district, absolutely.
Dan?
In the original discussions about even spending time on this district, didn't we kind of talk about this as being like a mini downtown anyway? So would it be appropriate to call this that, that type of zoning? If that's the character of the type of businesses that we want to crop up here?
Yeah, I mean, we, we had proposed originally the neighborhood commercial, and after we talked to the property owners, they felt that the neighborhood commercial would be more appropriate because of some intended uses for that. So, you know, it's kind of a compromised zoning district. I mean, the light industrial district, you know, while the current property owners have been good neighbors, that doesn't mean that future owners of that property will do the same thing. Anybody decided they're going to run some type of manufacturing facility or outside uses that are allowed in the LI district. So, you know, we felt that downzoning it would be a good thing for that area, for, for the neighbors in particular.
To capture the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish and to allay people's fears, would that zoning help us out here?
The neighborhood commercial, you mean?
No, the downtown zoning.
Well, I'm not sure if we can do the DMU district in this area.
It has to be contiguous, or it has to be?
Well, I believe, so I'd have to double check that.
The, the, the focus area plan does call for the possibility of mixed use zoning on the property. It's not downtown mixed use, but it's mixed use with, that would allow residential and commercial in the same building, or standalone residential to some extent.
I think that the restrictive use, this is like this midpoint. So, light industrials, side setback is 30 feet, rear setback is 45. The CC district is 30 and 40, but when we get to the neighborhood, it's 15 and 15. So it's kind of, it still keeps a big buffer for now, until things, you know, start moving forward in that area. But I do think it's, in some ways, in my opinion, it's good to take that light industrial zoning out of there so that we don't get a small factory in an area that we're trying to propose something better happen. So, Marty?
Yeah, no, I, the part that you're saying about another downtown, I, I don't think it's another downtown. We don't want another downtown. We want it to be a neighborhood with some businesses in it, which has a different feel to it. And since this area is predominantly overwhelmingly residential, we went the extra cautious route, even when we were looking at the, the density for the greenhouse area. We erred more on the side of, because this is such a tightly compact area, I'm more in support of the neighborhood. One, because it's a little more restrictive, because this has so many potential areas for pitfalls that I want this area done right. And it would be better to work something that fits better than try to peel something back and shoehorn something in there that doesn't necessarily transform the area into what, what a lot of the neighbors were initially thinking. They want the area better, but I don't know as if they want it to be another extension of an area that doesn't exist. But definitely, the light industrial should go.
So, so Joel, Scott just said that, you know, we were discussing this in the past, you know, it was with the, the intention of a neighborhood development, okay? An NC designation. Why then did staff come up with the, the CC designation?
After speaking with the property owners, they brought up the idea of the community commercial district. And we feel that in, if the choices between light, between leaving it light industrial and having a different zoning district there, there ought to be a different zoning district and community commercial would be supported by the owners of the property. It does require greater setbacks if redevelopment were to occur compared to neighborhood commercial. One of the pros. On the downside, it does allow a couple of uses that were brought up by neighbors as not being desirable, and also by the, also by the plan commission. But, taken as a whole, to have it, to leave it as industrial compared to, compared to neighborhood commercial. Neighborhood commercial was our first choice, but then we listened to the property owners at the hearing, that's what the hearing is for. And plan commission also did note that the community commercial could be a good compromise between the two. And in the spirit of compromise, staff is recommending the community commercial district.
So, so if we decide on a community commercial, can we somewhat limit the, the hours? Can we kind of massage the hours and some of the negatives that the residents were, were voicing?
We can do that. If that's your desire, you can table your consideration of this zoning change. Is one choice is to table your consideration of this. And with direction, we can begin a public hearing to have the plan commission consider some changes to what is allowed in the community commercial district. We could, we could talk about introducing a limitation of hours. We could talk with the plan commission about selecting what uses maybe to require a conditional use for, or even remove. I'm not saying that's the best thing to do, but that's one course of action that the cow can take.
I would also note that you don't necessarily need to table this. You can take action on it, rezone it, and then to give direction for us to amend, you know, particular parts of the, of the district, which would, would apply to all the properties in whatever district is chosen if it's besides light industrial.
I'm just, just trying to find, you know, what, what the majority of the residents want without, you know, any negative implications towards the, the businesses that are there.
So, speaking of property owners and residents, is there anyone from the audience who would like to address the council about this zoning amendment?
We, we, you know, I don't believe we're done. I believe other people have something to say.
Okay. I just thought maybe it would be good to hear from people in that area too, and then we could have some additional comments afterwards. But Mark, what would you like to say?
Yeah, I agree with what Marty was saying. I like the more restrictive NC. And is CC in use anywhere else? I didn't look through all of our zoning. Is that in use anywhere?
We do have a couple of select areas. There's a, a property on South Batavia at Sycamore that's community commercial.
Wilson Street, East Wilson.
Yeah, there's some property on East Wilson.
Speedway also is.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, because I look at some of the uses under CC, and I, yeah, I wouldn't want that right next door to me if I, if this was in my area. So I understand the concerns of some of the homeowners there. What is the possibility of, I mean, because if you go and we amend CC to get rid of some of these uses, and those happen to be in the other districts that already have CC going, then now that seems to cause a complication for them moving forward. Can we create another district that melds these two some way that then it makes it a lot easier for us so we can get rid of the things that we don't like and we can not affect anybody else that is existing already?
One thing you could also consider as part of that is, if you wanted to, if you had some particular concerns about state distance to residential, you could also have some type of a buffer zone that's incorporated into the community commercial district to say, you know, you cannot have X uses within X feet of a residential area or something to that effect. So that way you're not creating a whole brand-new district, at least you're mitigating some of those things when they're next to a residential area.
Nick, you had something?
I was just going to see if Chris had an opinion on this regarding supply and demand, and who might be looking, and who might, who might this affect?
Well, generally speaking, on two notes. One is, when you down, downzone, if you will, properties, you diminish opportunities. So, right now, light industrial, if Ron Link were to find someone that wanted to buy a light industrial building, if you rezone it, then that use can't be there. The other side of the coin is, you know, planning departments all over aren't just reactionary. They also have a role to implement a land use plan, let alone respond to requests for changes. So, I think this initiative is, my suspicion is that it's, it's to implement the land use plan that was adopted in the TIF four plan. And to do that is to limit the, the uses that are inconsistent with that plan. And to do that is to essentially try to prohibit them. So, you have an opportunity now, and I use the Link building as an example because it's essentially vacant, where, and apparently Ron doesn't object to this, where if we downzone it to a more compatible use with respect to the TIF four plan, then we're killing two birds with one stone. We're, we're trying to create an opportunity for development that was perceived to be the desirable development and the redevelopment of that area generally. Some, I think there was some discussion about if we change the community, or the neighborhood commercial versus the community commercial, we change, make changes now that further limit the uses, or even setbacks for that matter, or any entitlements in the district generally. I think you need to be careful of not having that be so pervasive that existing uses outside of this area become non-conforming. That would diminish some property value. So, I guess, the short answer is, I think it's a good idea to implement the plan that you've adopted. And if you have consenting neighborhoods, consenting property owners, this would be the right opportunity to do it.
Lucy?
I'm also in favor of changing the zoning from light industrial to another zoning. And I prefer the commercial, community commercial because one of the objectives, and I guess Chris alluded to this, was to strengthen the commercial center here. And I think that the neighborhood commercial will dilute that more. And I think it will be harder to maintain that if we really want to have, or the objective was to have a commercial center out here. So I would be in favor of the community commercial.
If I may, one other thing I should note, I know that we're talking about uses that are potentially objectionable, but in the LI district, as a permitted use are adult arcades, adult bookstores, adult movie theaters, and adult shows or adult theaters. So those are things that could move in there as permitted uses today.
Tony, you had something?
Yeah, I was just going to say that. I too supportive to go community commercial because it's going to spread the net wide to be able to redevelopment. I think if we, the more limits we put, the less likely it is in our, our objective is to get that more, get that developed.
Marty?
Scott? Being as how this is initially, when we were doing the West Town TIF, the proponents were, or the, the plan was for the neighborhood commercial. That was what we were telling neighbors left and right about it. To change it now, I don't know as if, because we knew what they were wanting, what the expectations were when we set that. Are you, would you not still have, if you had a business that came in that was under CC only, and it was NC, we, they could apply for it and go through, like, what would that be considered? A variance process, or?
No, that would be, that would be a text amendment. Because we don't have what are called use variances. We only allow what's under the particular zoning classification that there is. So if somebody wanted to put something in there that is not allowed under, say, the NC district, they would have to ask for a text amendment to add that use to the NC district.
And that's where, to kind of avoid the creating a hodgepodge of a group, wait for, and, and try to figure something to pull into there, kind of stick with what the initial plan was, what we told the neighborhood with what we were going to do. And should something else come out that, that is not consistent, you haven't limited it, you've just given them a different avenue for trying to make it happen. It's kind of going back and forth with what the expectation was when it was initially set. We created all of this initially with the neighborhood, and we went through all of it, and nobody brought up the CC at that time. And we never heard from people any objections to it. So, I would hate to pull a switcheroo.
I'm starting to understand why, um, plan commission left this as light industrial. Just saying. Okay. Anyone else, or can we have members of the audience speak? Alan?
I think, you know, the more that I looked at this, and I live right next, very clear, very near to this, I think that as much stuff that is- very near to this, I think that as much stuff that is listed in there that is permitted in the community one, not in the neighborhood one, there's also a lot of conditional uses that are in there for things that if there are questions or things we have to add in, or we would like to add into it, they're conditionally uses, so it's something that we have to go through an approval process to make that happen. Whoever's on the city council will have to make those decisions. So, I lean more towards the community side of it. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, is that not the one that also has the, the different setbacks that are closer to what they are today than what neighborhood? Isn't neighborhood a smaller setback?
Yes.
Where community would keep it closer to what's there today? And I think that that's somewhat important, depending on what goes in there, or regardless of what goes in there, to try to keep some of that buffer between backyards and businesses.
Yes. The, the community and the light industrial setbacks are very close. The neighborhood are, are much narrower setbacks.
Yeah. For, for example, community commercial has a 30-foot transitional setback to residential, but it's only 15 feet in the neighborhood commercial. Transitional to residential for a rear yard is 40 feet in the community commercial and only 15 feet in the neighborhood commercial.
Anybody else in the council? Okay. Now, anybody in the public?
My name is Kate McCracken. I represent the property owner. I want to just address a couple of comments that were made tonight. One of the first comments that was, that I heard tonight was that we have made, or the city council has made representations to the neighbors about the fact that this was going to be neighborhood commercial and that there was no objection from the property owner. I will tell you that when my client was actually notified that this was up for consideration, he appeared, he objected, and frankly, did exactly the right thing, which was sit down with somebody to give him some specific options that might be available. I'm struggling a little bit with the concept of we really want to see something get going there. And yet, what we're talking about here is a substantial reduction in what can or cannot happen at that property. What we did when we came to staff with the community commercial is we did an analysis of uses approved under light industrial versus realistic uses in neighborhood commercial versus realistic uses in community commercial. Certainly, there's no dispute that my client would prefer this to be light industrial. But I understand, and he understands, that this is a light industrial use surrounded by a certain amount of residential. As a result, obviously, this is something that the municipality would prefer to modify. But I think that at a certain point, we have to look at, A, what neighborhood commercial would do to the value of the property, the realistic approach of what, or the realistic analysis of what would happen if you rezone this to neighborhood commercial. You have substantially restricted what can and cannot happen with that property. So, if your goal is to see something happen with that property, neighborhood commercial is not going to increase the likelihood that you're going to see a quick and substantial increase in potential development. Secondarily, again, the community commercial, the suggestion and the discussion among all of the property owners that are affected by this potential zoning change was, light industrial is what it is, neighborhood commercial is on the table, let's look at what a reasonable compromise is that still retains the value of the underlying property for each of the property owners and still provides the municipality with at least the potential for something more appealing, as it were, than light industrial. That was the purpose of the discussion for community commercial. I don't know what was said to the neighbors. I will say that I've been at the hearing. We really had no neighbors appear that objected to my client's use. Quite frankly, the most significant objection to community commercial was the fact that it had a permitted use for a tattoo parlor. As I said then, and as I would say today, if that needs to be removed as a permitted use from the community commercial, my client certainly has no objection. From a practical perspective, this is not an appropriate or a even, a likely location for a tattoo parlor. And so, the deletion of that as a permitted use, if that's the objective, objection, is certainly an option. But I would ask all of you to consider community commercial as a compromise between an objecting property owner who does not want to see light industrial go and neighborhood commercial, which may not be the most practical and realistic zoning classification for this property. If there are things that need to happen as it relates to permitted uses under the community commercial, that's certainly something we are willing to discuss and consider. But I would ask all of you to consider the fact that we have property owners, the affected property owners, all of whom have agreed and accepted the fact that community commercial is an appropriate and acceptable compromise position between what they have and what was apparently discussed at some time in the past. Are there any questions I can answer?
Anyone have any questions? Marty?
Yeah, no, I think what I was referring to is the discussions that, not the latest hearing on this, but the last turnout where we had the majority of the public here were at the, the TIF creation. And that's when the room was packed with people and what they wanted to see and what their vision of, of it was. And that went more towards the density. And we were gleaning a lot of what they were wanting to see. Staff wanted eight to, eight to 15 units per acre. And then the compromise was somewhere around five to eight, but I think we ultimately went to three and a half to five just because it was the, the overwhelming consensus of what the neighborhood was wanting to do with that community for the way we were setting the direction. I'm very mindful of what you're saying about the compromise part of it. And I guess that's the part that I would want to hear from neighbors about if we did go to a CC, what specifically would we want removed out of there so that the tattoo parlors, that would be agreeable to the surrounding property owners to allay their fears and give them the spirit of what they were initially seeing for the redevelopment of their neighborhood?
And two responses to that. Number one, my sense is that the consensus of the objections was the tattoo parlor, rightly or wrongly. Secondarily, it's great when everyone has sort of a discussion about the vision of what we would like to see happen, but we really have to be mindful of the people that own the property and the uses that they are currently entitled to. And so, yes, it is very easy for me to say as a neighbor, this is what I want to see with someone else's property? That's not entirely appropriate when we're talking about rezoning and substantially reducing and affecting the value of someone's property and not just a small piece, but a significant piece of property. And, and so, I appreciate those comments, and I appreciate the fact that there were individuals who articulated what they, what their vision is. But it does sound to me like the vision completely set aside the fact that we have underlying property owners with underlying property rights.
I'm in full agreement with you on that. Full agreement with you.
Anyone else? Dave? Or you mean Mike?
I mean, anybody else in the?
Hi. Is there, I can't see anybody from here. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak?
Susan, I'm going to make a recommendation, a motion. We recommend city council for approval of ordinance 18-57, amending the official zoning map of the city of Batavia, 750 through 812 Main Street, City of Batavia applicant. And that will make it, that proposes for the change to be a community commercial district.
Second. Motion by O'Brien, second by Phelan Atack. We need to do a roll call. Alan?
One question before we vote. Scott, if we wanted to change what were permitted or conditional uses on this after we already set the district up, what would that entail? Public hearings?
That would be a public hearing in front of the Plan Commission for a text amendment. And then I would come back to you for?
And I guess that's my thought is, you know, if we think about that and we decide we want to have it a little bit more restrictive on this particular district, if we were to do that, would it affect all the CC districts in town then? So, that's, okay. And that's something I think we as policymakers will have to think about and decide, do we want to change that in those to be able to, maybe it's just make them conditional so that they all have to come in front of us?
Right. You could do that.
Well, if I can, yeah, I wanted to touch on that because I guess my question is, I'm not against this. But if there were a business that comes to town and wants a spot that classified as LI, not CC anymore, but it's a good one, do they, are they just booted out? Or is there a process that would allow them to come in front of us that we can reevaluate?
Well, we?
Well, we're clearly in between a few zoning classifications that it's not really clear 100% what we want. We could probably pick businesses that are in LI or CC or NC and say, oh, that, we would love to have that here. So, by just classifying it one, are we limiting some good businesses that we all would love as a community and the neighbors would love to be there because we're so, you know, we want to classify?
I only see one in there, and that's brewery.
Yeah. And that, and I, well?
That definitely sparks the bike.
We'll find another spot.
That was the one that stood out to me, too.
Right. That's the only thing I see.
Yeah. I mean, I looked at that, and I thought, well, I kind of thought that that was one of the uses that would be a good use for that part of town. A group pub.
Group pub is listed in CC.
Right. So, there you go. Well, it's, it's more in, in general, not necessarily applicable here, but in all of our zonings when we do that because I'm concerned even of the process of being business friendly. When somebody comes to the city, do they just look up the zone and go, no, sorry? You're out.
If I, if I may, you know, what we do is, you know, if we find a business that's not compatible, it's, we typically don't just say, go away. I mean, if there's a site that they can, you know, find in one of the businesses that was interested, we kept trying to steer them to the industrial park where, where they had, you know, other compatible uses that would make more sense for the, where their business should be located. They did, ultimately didn't do that, but, you know, we did steer them toward that direction. But also, at the same time, the next thing on your agenda is a text amendment for, for several things in the zoning code. So, you know, we're constantly looking at the zoning code, making recommendations and revising it. If there are things that, you know, we or the council feel that we need to change on it, by all means, let us know, and we can, you know, propose a text amendment for that. That's, that's, you know, a regular course of business just to refine and tweak our zoning code as we need to.
Well, and, and I appreciate, we see a lot of that. But do we see it in a timely fashion when there's an applicant that would be a great fit somewhere, but it's just outside the zone? Do we see it then? Or is there a known process to that applicant that said, oh, no, it's the wrong zoning. You know what? Why don't we kick it up to whoever or take this process?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's times certainly when we are able to say, you know what? And the group pub was a good example of, of one. We did make some text amendments to add group pub because it just felt like there were some areas that we should really have those because it makes a lot of sense. So, but, you know, it depends on the, on the business. And, you know, sometimes, you know, we say, you know what? You've got a business that does make a lot of sense for this district, you know? If you'd like, let's propose a text amendment and, you know, see if we can put that use into your district. You know, we don't always do it, but I mean, there are times certainly when it does happen. Yes.
Mike, you had a question?
So, Susan, I'm, I'm going to support this ordinance. You know, Attorney McCracken made some good points. I think Tony and Lucy made good points. And to Nick's thinking, if we had it, the neighborhood commercial, we'd be closing the door on some people who we would want maybe to come to this community. And they wouldn't even have the opportunity to approach us. They might do their homework and do their due diligence and say, oh, that's, we're, we're not allowed in that community with our business. And so, I would think, you know, as Tony said, we'll be shutting the door, so I wouldn't want to do that. And I think this is, it's, it's an agreeable fit to, to everyone, you know? Not everyone's happy with it, but they're not unhappy with it. So, I'm definitely going to support the ordinance as is.
Marty?
How do we get the process moving for adjusting those businesses that we know that neighbors already said they don't want to see in there? Because while we don't want to close the doors for businesses that may come in, I also don't want to slam the doors on the people that are already living there and are trying to figure out what is going to go in there. And they've clearly said they don't want the expectation of these type of businesses just because we're trying to put something in there. It's the balance between the property owner's rights and allowing them to do, what they're really wanting to do is have a compromise, which is what we need to hear from the neighbors about all of those hearings that we had on the expectation, the vision planning for the TIF. We can't just throw that away and say, we've had another hearing and without the notification process to hear from the neighbors because we did have a lot of people. Because if the compromise can be made and we don't set up a neighborhood conflict just to get some businesses in, which is what we're trying to avoid, figure out what the neighborhood could not want, does not want to see in there, then it sounds like there's probably some agreement on those businesses that they wouldn't want to see. So, that we're not changing without hearing from people that actually do live there. They're going to be opening their doors to see what their neighborhood looks like. It's not having a direct say over it, but that's why we're making these changes. We also want to have them have a say in the portion, in the part of it.
I think from what I remember of the, the meetings that we had, you know, everyone that moved in to the area around on either side of that moved into an area that backed up to L1, light industrial.
Right.
So, they knew that from the beginning. And they knew when we changed it and we made the West Town Tiff that we were going to reduce those possibilities or reduce the possibilities of businesses going back in there that were similar to what was there before. And the uses would probably be, I won't call it a downgrade, but a change to the better for a neighborhood area from what was there before. So, if we take the step down to community, I think that that is going the way that they want it to go. I think the majority of the neighbors will be okay with it. And if there's one or two things that don't fit there, they probably don't fit in other places that we have the CC district. So, those should, should be things that we look at and change, just like we have staff go through every year and they take different sections of the zoning code and they look at it, and then we change it, modify it to fit what reality is. That's what we'd be doing with this. So, I, I think it's a step in the right direction. I don't think it's the end, but I think it's the step that we need to take.
I find it ironic that we're talking about tattoo parlors in the West Town District, but we have one on the Main Street of downtown, and that's a permitted use. I, just saying. Mike?
Just, you know, maybe to maybe take care of some of Marty's fears, is, is address them is, is what was said was at, at the, the TIF hearings when we had those. But then staff just had meetings with the Plan Commission, and people were there. And what they came to, 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 to resolve was a community commercial. And, and that was pretty much what everyone kind of agreed upon or not fully agreed upon, but I, I think that's, that's a meeting of the minds. And so, I hope that just kind of addresses some of your fears that people aren't being listened to or heard.
We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Let's call the question.
So, and Jenny, can you please do a roll call? O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler absent. Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
No.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown absent. Rosato?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset absent. Salvati?
Aye.
Ann Wolfe?
Aye.
Motion carried nine to two.
Okay. So, that'll move on with positive recommendation. And then I think? So that'll move on with positive recommendation and then I think soon we should talk about the changes that we may want to make or that we should discuss what changes we may want to make to that community commercial.
If you'd like tonight, I mean, if you have two aldermen that want to direct staff to do a text amendment to make conditional use, tattoo parlors and pawn shops, those seem to be the two that were of issue. So if you wanted to do that, then we can go ahead and proceed with a text amendment that would add those things.
That's the way I would get my support, is that we would make sure that we're bringing in the neighbors that are actually going to have a say in, maybe it's not just those two, but what other ones should, do they want us to consider to not have? Because that's, that's what I want, that's why I want this to succeed, is this whole TIF redevelopment. The plan is to redevelop a neighborhood where people live. They should have a say. And that's the only thing that I want to have people come out and figure out what they're doing for their community. Mostly everybody here does not live in it, but the people that we're deciding for should have more of a say in what goes in their neighborhood because that was what the plan was.
I'd like to, I'd like to ask another alderman to stand with me to direct staff to please make tattoo parlors and pawn shops conditionally uses in the first go-round.
Second.
Dan?
Another step.
So you have directions, Scott?
Yes.
We'll start with those two.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. If I can get my agenda back here.
We're at ordinance eighteen fifty-nine, which is also community development. And this is a whole lot of changes to the text of the zoning code, which is something we do pretty regularly. And Joel, would you like to give us the highlight tour because there's a lot of them here?
I'm sure. There are a number of proposed amendments to the, to the code presented in the draft ordinance. The first amendment would eliminate what is essentially a double requirement to landscape new multiple-family developments. What staff is proposing to do is to eliminate the requirement of, to eliminate the requirement in the multifamily district that's based on the perimeter of the site and leave in the current, another current requirement that's based on street frontages that not only requires trees, but also require shrubs. So we're getting rid of the double tree requirement for new residential subdivisions. The next amendment would-
Does anybody have any questions on two that, too? Shrubs, trees? Okay.
Okay, thank you. The, the next amendment would require conditional use approval by the city council for any business that has video gaming machines. And if you remember, video gaming machines also required a city-issued license. That's another change.
Any questions on that? Nope. Okay.
The third amendment would exempt light pole bases, the height of the light pole base, from the measurement of the overall height of the light pole installation. We do have limits on those and our limits are kind of line up with standard pole heights and in order to meet the maximum requirement, very often poles would have to be altered on-site, which could void warranties or introduce corrosion by cutting them down. So this would essentially increase the allowed height of light fixtures, pole-mounted light fixtures by one and a half feet.
Is the, how look works is good with that?
Yes.
And what does that do to residents in, say, a second-floor apartment?
It would probably have little effect to residents in second-floor apartments for brand-new installations. We do have other requirements for full cutoff housing of fixtures.
And put candle limitations as well, property line.
Okay.
And then there's a part two of this, and that's the fences?
Correct. And also we are proposing to raise the height of fences allowed in the corner-side setback area from the current maximum of three feet to four feet. Earlier this summer, the city council approved a variance to allow a four-foot corner-side fence. And staff over the years has heard many complaints about fence heights, saying, my dog can jump over a three-foot fence but can't jump over a four-foot fence. That was one of the, one of the items that was mentioned by the variance applicant. And with the council's unanimous approval of that, staff is proposing to just change the code citywide to allow up to a four-foot fence. This would still, we would still keep the prohibition of chain link and wire fences in street-side setback areas. So there's no change to that prohibition.
Anybody have any questions about fences or light poles? Okay, moving on.
The next amendment that we're proposing would exempt city utility facility sites that do not have occupied buildings from needing design review approval. So a new building on such sites would not have to go in front of the city's Plan Commission for review. We would still require all setbacks that are currently required in the code or any landscaping that is currently required. That would not change.
Could you give an example of what a building like this would be? The first thing that came to mind was a wastewater treatment plant, but that's staffed, so that would not, that would be exempt from this.
Correct. These would be pump houses, buildings associated with electrical sites, with electric sites.
You said the substation plan last week. They must be inaccurate because I can't think of one that stands out in my mind as something that, okay.
And that's the-
It wouldn't apply-
That's a good thing.
Yeah, exactly.
That's a good thing.
By design.
This wouldn't affect like the Metronet unmanned facility there at, something like that?
No.
City.
That's not city.
That's-
And I believe that building may not have been large enough for design review anyway.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions about this one?
Yeah.
Okay, so now we're up to use definitions.
Right, the, the next two groupings are essentially to take care of definitions and the definitions of general terms to accommodate the proposed changes. The zoning code currently doesn't define video gaming as a use, so in order to require a conditional use, we have to define the use and then regulate it as a conditional use. So we would add a definition to the, we would add a definition for video gaming and it's taken almost directly from the portion of the city code that requires licenses for video gaming. And then lastly, to the, to the chapter of the glossary of general terms, we are proposing to refine the definitions for lots and lot areas and setback areas to implement the four-foot height limitation for corner-side fences.
Okay, does anyone have any questions about any of these changes? Okay. So the pros to this, of course, are if we approve this, it'll correct issue staff has encountered in administrating the zoning code and align, see a zoning code language with recent council actions. If we don't approve it, then again, this now goes to, again, a case-by-case, just like that three versus four-foot fence. Additional video, additionally, video gaming establishments would not have any zoning control. And there's no budget impact, there's no staff impact. With a cow recommendation, this will be placed on the agenda for September fourth for final action. And it was recommended to us by Plan Commission unanimously. So-
I make a motion, we recommend city council approval, approval of ordinance eighteen dash fifty-nine, amending the city of Batavia zoning code, title ten of the city code.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Salvati. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Number nine on the agenda tonight is resolution eighteen dash one oh one dash R, authorizing a contract with Lahip, the government services.
Yes, a local agency for low-income housing energy assistance program. They've provided a contract to the city, to Peggy, and they're offering a three-year agreement from July first to two thousand and eighteen to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. And for clients who have been disconnected from their fuel service or refused delivery because of inability to pay, they may be eligible for a reconnection grant.
Hi. Good evening. Sorry, I didn't put a memo with that. Lahip is the institution that helps all of our low-income residents who have had their power disconnected or they're subject to disconnection. And in order for us to accept the money, we have to sign this agreement saying that it will be applied to their account.
Okay. So I move that we recommend to council the approval of resolution eighteen dash one oh one dash R, authorizing a contract with Community Context Local Agency for the Low-Income Housing Energy Assistance Program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Can we have that on the regular agenda, just so it's, people see it?
I was going to say, I think it'd be interesting, too, to know, you know, how much we use through that, how much goes through there and how many people get, you know.
Do we know that, Peggy?
Peggy? Do you know how many people, or could you get that by a council, because we want to like to talk about how many people that affects, how many people use it, what kind of, you know, service it?
Sure, I'll get you the numbers. It's our most-used assistance program. There are other local churches and Salvation Army that also provide assistance, but Community Context is definitely our largest source of income for those low-income residents. I'll get it to you before the council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And next up is a resolution eighteen dash one oh three dash R, authorizing change order number six with Williams Brothers Construction for Phase One of the wastewater treatment rehabilitation project.
Okay, this is change order number six and they have it grouped together, they have grouped eight of them together, contract modification requests. I guess the largest one was a contract modification request number twenty-seven, the slide gate replacement. There was, there was proposal for that for sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. The amount came in at thirty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven. So we, spending thirty-four thousand extra, but it's, it's something that had to happen. So that's pretty much it. The only thing that is troublesome to me would be the eleven days extension.
Right.
You know, the, the cost of the contract, I feel the cost of the contract and the cost of the change order is minimal, really, for the extent of the contract.
Well, and that's certainly why I, I wanted to call it out because I knew that there had been discussions at pretty much every one of the monthly meetings and, and wanted to give a chance for questions and answers. And Jerry Ruth was kind enough to come down tonight, so if there's something that I can't answer about the time extensions, Jerry is here with us, so.
Scott?
I mean, do you think that this request for time extension is kind of a catch-all for the fact that they're behind as it is?
Well, they're, and again, Jerry can probably answer more precisely than I can because they've been really the meat grinders with the, with the contractor. But I can tell you this, the contractor asked for a lot more. I think one of the things, the extreme weather conditions, at least cold weather conditions, I think Trotter used a good matrix in that they went, again, the contractor wanted a bunch of days for weather under twenty degrees. And Trotter took a look back over the last five years and said, okay, this is the average number of days that we have in a typical winter here in northern Illinois where you bid the job. And, and it turns out there were four more days over or under twenty degrees this past winter than there had been on average over the last five years. So, you know, while they wanted this much, we said, there's your four days. You give four days for that. So those, those are the kind of matrix, matrices and criteria that they've been kind of put under. Again, same with rain delays. I think a lot of those delays were really where not so much the river was high because that's the water table down there. You know, you could see that when you bid the job or, and it was noted in, in the bidding documents as well that it's a shallow water table. But these were like days when rain was running down the hill and filling up holes. And so they're legitimate. The, the day that they took for the replacement of the slide gate was, actually, that's why part of the reason the, the costs were way down is because we were able to get all that done in one day. And so, but it was a wasted day for most of their crew, or a lot of their crew. So that was an additional day. So this has been argued and, and, you know, beat around in the bushes really hard down at, down in the back room, so.
Anybody else have any questions? I might have a couple. Just, and they'll be brief. I'm assuming that then Trotter has documentation on the rain days, as you said?
Yes.
And, and I can understand the one day that they got for the slide gates, that was an added day we gave them of work, and so that needs to get added on to that. I get that. But they have it documented and all the change orders that they have, they have documented also, signed documentation for whatever, however it is a change.
For all of these CMRs we do have, I did not sign these two CMRs just yet-
Right.
-because I wanted to have the council's-
Right, but all the CMRs, at least Trotter has looked at them and approved them.
Absolutely. The, the document for the request for the ten days, not the eleventh day with the slide gates, but for the ten days is fifteen pages long. And it includes back and forth and memos back and forth from the contractor to Trotter to me to, so yes, it is well-documented.
So I, and just again with the cold weather, I think Alderman Brown, if he was here, would attest that he'd have his crew out there when it's zero degrees and sub-zero. They'd be out working because this is northern Illinois and that's what we have. So you just don't go home and continue-
They did, they did have, and again, that's documented with that CMR. They did have issues with pouring concrete and scheduling-
Right.
-city staff to be out there, the inspectors to be there. So part of it was the, you know, the days they're looking for, they were trying to pour concrete on and they didn't get to do it.
Right, I understand. All right, anybody else, anything? Anybody care to make a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Malley, second by Rosoto. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's it, ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Set a consent agenda?
Consent.
Building trades program worked at five degrees. Okay. And- Okay, what's next? This will be now the presentation on mid-year reports, community and economic development first.
Okay, well, I'm looking for my report and I think it's not on this agenda.
Just go all the way down to the bottom is the tap power point.
I'm sorry?
The tap power point down there at the bottom.
Move to the right. Yep.
Ah, there we go. This public works.
And go all the other areas.
This is mine. Okay, thank you. This is the mid-year report for community development. We've had a lot of activity, as we've talked to you about. Seems like we always have a lot of things on the agenda for you to consider, so you can see the things that we're doing. But this is kind of a recap of a lot of the things that we're doing. In relation to budgetary items, building permit activity, we've been much busier with a variety of projects involving larger and more complex projects, including new developments, redevelopment. We've had a volume of permits for things, group permits such as driveways and roof repairs and siding. Permit numbers have been up and down with housing permits being up, commercial and industrial permits being mixed. Plan reviews are at a very high level, especially during the warmer months where we typically see most of our activity. The complexity of cases has been more complex with different things that we've dealt with, with like the Park District Facility, the Windmill Manor Project, and soon to be the Windmill Landing Project. So projects that are not just your single-family homes are very simple additions and so on and so forth. We have been taking longer for plan reviews and permit issuance during our business times and that is a function of just volume as well as the reduced staff that we have on our department. So we had made a request in the budget- So we had made a request in the budget to add staff. Obviously, that was put on hold due to some of the financial things that we had consideration on. So we have, this is a little bit old, that, you know, we have now received the go-ahead to do that, which we certainly appreciate. So we are in the process of hiring that new person. We have a planned date for, I believe, September 7th for resumes. So we hope to get that new individual in place and going as quickly as possible, so they'll be ready to go next year. Similar with code enforcement, we have, we only have one code enforcement officer, and so therefore, we can only do as much as she has the time to do. We have complaints that range from illegal signs to deteriorating building conditions, hoarding. We've had several hoarding cases, especially the last month here in the city. We also have, you know, their typical weeds and landscaping and maintenance complaints. So she spends a lot of time doing that. We don't just send letters out most of the time, there's a lot of personal contact, whether it be by phone or by visiting the individuals. So we feel that, you know, we do a better job of that than many other communities do that just, you know, send out mass letters and just, you know, try to handle it that way. So all that does take time when we do that. So we're trying to take advantage of technology. She has got an iPad that allows her to do more of that, you know, follow-up with letters and documentation on it in the field, so she doesn't have to come in the office as much. That's still a work in progress, but we do have that in place, so at least that's getting us in that right direction to make some of her operations more efficient. And then we try to be, right now, we're being very reactive to complaints, mostly it's when we receive complaints, or if she sees something that's obviously blatant out in the field. But we're hoping to be a little more proactive, like a few years ago did with the fourth ward enforcement efforts, where we actually went out and saw things and just made a whole list of things to try and improve some of the conditions and properties out in that area. So as I said, here, we have a very low number of staff for a community of 27,000, but with the additional person, that will certainly help us quite a bit with trying to follow up on a backlog of what we've got going.
Scott, before you move on from there, can you speak a little bit about the IDA grant that the city received to assist with the cleanup of abandoned properties?
I was gonna do that at the very end.
Okay.
I was gonna talk about the two grants at the very end, they didn't actually have that in here, but I was gonna talk about those.
Cool.
Historic building reviews, we have been pursuing the downtown buildings, the limestone buildings, the historic buildings for conditions. We have issued adjudication notices on some of them, we've had compliance on several, but some that we have had, you know, extended timeframes for compliance, or had missed deadlines. We are actually taking some of those to adjudication and try and get compliance. So once we have that backlog of those, and which will help with the new staff person, we will be able to resume with doing the inspections on remaining buildings. We have a list of buildings that would be in that vein, so once we can get through some of the enforcement efforts, we'll be able to start, you know, going back and doing inspection on those again.
Scott, one thing, could you speak a little bit about what Home Rule provides us with the authority to do with regard to enforcement actions with regard to code violations?
Yeah, the biggest thing that would happen is we would have to change the way we do the adjudication process. Adjudication right now is a process that allows us to essentially have a quasi-judicial process, instead of taking everything to Circuit Court, which takes longer and costs more to do that. It's kind of a hearing officer situation, where it allows us to take things to them, and then they have an adjudication ruling as to what it is that they want them to do, and typically it's fines and compliance. If we lose Home Rule, one of the things that would happen is we would not be able to just perfect those fines by just issuing notices, we would actually have to go back to Circuit Court to have a judge rule and say, okay, the fines that the adjudicator had, now you can start enforcing those by leaning property or whatever. Right now, once we get the adjudication notice, we can do liens and enforce those liens without going through the judicial process. So we would then have another step in the enforcement process, so it would take longer actually to get compliance with code enforcement violations.
Are there additional fees involved with that, but going with it back?
Absolutely, yeah. We'd have to file court filing fees and all that that would be involved, so it would be more expensive process, too. Annexation of surrounded areas, we've been making progress on these. We're pretty much done with the ones that we can get that have been interested in annexing, either by their agreements or that have said, yeah, okay, I'll go ahead and comply with the ordinances or the agreements I had. So we're kind of more in a situation where it's gonna be a little tougher to get some of those. We did annex about a dozen properties this last year, and there may be still a couple more that I've been talking about that may happen. But we will be talking about this in the very near future with you about, you know, what the process has done, how much EAV we've brought in, how many heads we've brought in with that kind of thing, and the taxes that we would bring in, have brought in already with those annexations. I think the key thing here is that we are looking at a potential deadline of 2020 census. What that means is that we need to get additional properties annexed before the census comes into play, because those populations that are counted as part of the census then go towards the head taxes that we get from the state, the motor fuel taxes. So if we don't get those in the city by the 2020 census, we lose those until either we do a new special census or until the 2030 census. So there's kind of a time crunch that's gonna be coming in front of us, you know, with those. So we're gonna see potential loss of revenue if we don't bring those properties into the city limits before the 2020 census. So I'm giving you a little heads-up on that, that that's gonna be part of what we're gonna be addressing when we bring this back to you, probably in the next month or so. One Washington Place, TIF 5, continuing to make progress in this project, however, the lead contamination, which you're all aware of, has kind of delayed things somewhat. Chris may touch on this a little bit more, but the remediation needs to be done before we transfer this to the future developer. Consultant has been engaged to study the issue and to determine what the costs are going to be to remediate it. Once that has been resolved, I think that's about the final issue before we can proceed forward with that project. The plumbing inspector contract, which we entered into with the blessing of the city council, is in place. The contract has a small increase in fees, which seem to be reasonable based on the inflationary situations with cost of doing business and the five years since the contract began. So we have been very satisfied with them as a plumbing contractor. They're very timely, they're very responsive to things that we've asked for, and so we're very pleased with their services they provided. Community development plan in relation to strategic plan goals, maintain the, enhance the quality of housing stock in the city. We're still reviewing the expansion of the rental housing program with the police department, however, the Home Rule issue has delayed this. If, there's no point in us expanding this program if we're going to wish to do so, if Home Rule goes away, because the program is basically gonna go away. So until we can get some decision on that, that whole issue is on hold. We do need to revisit some of the topics that early on pertaining to staffing needs. If we're going to expand the program significantly, then, you know, we may need to have some additional staff, and they would help address and inspect those units. So that, again, will come back to the city council at some point in the future, assuming that the Home Rule referendum goes one way or another. Number of rehabilitation projects gone in the city with individual homes, specifically on South Harrison Street, as well as Old Blaine Street School Building, which has been completed, that has been completed as a two-flat building. They've done a nice job of completing that renovation. And then infill lots are either being built on or being proposed in various locations, including along McKee Street, Maple Avenue, and Hart Road. So there's a number of different infill lots that are occurring. The other is to address the diversity of housing choices. The William Manor Housing Complex is now complete, actually, in the Hawks Drive area in the northwest part of the community. We are now reviewing the Windmill Landing Project that would be on the other side of the street, that that would be an assisted and independent living facility, congregate care, about 142 units in their first phase, and that would include independent living, memory care, and assisted living. Previously considered the Campana Building, which everyone in the world is aware of, that project was withdrawn in 2018. So we spent a lot of time during the last year reviewing FOIA requests and responses that have asked us for information regarding that project, as well as staff reports and going through the various meetings that we had. So that took up a lot of staff time doing that. City property at Wilson Street in Spiller was recently approved for a single-six, single-family lots, and we did sell that. Habitat for Humanity has acquired that property, and we've had conversations since the sale, and they are planning on coming back with a four-lot re-subdivision on that property. So they feel that the lots were a little small for what they'd like to see, and so they're going to propose a little bit bigger development on that instead of the six lots, or bigger lots, I should say. I talked about the One Washington Project already, just consisting of 190 apartments and housing type that is not available in the city. TIF funds would be used to fund part of that, including the parking, public parking garage. Continuing on the strategic planning goals, supporting the private sector and redevelopment of housing, we have been supportive of employer-assisted housing in previous efforts with Geneva, North Aurora, and St. Charles. We talked about also an inclusionary housing ordinance, which we elected not to proceed with. Private projects that have been approved included the Blaine Street School redevelopment and a duplex on First Street. City approved a TIF grant to support housing rehabilitation on South Harrison Street. There was also a county grant on an adjacent home that was done in that same vicinity. Prairie Combs Development on Kirk Road has begun infrastructure improvements, and we anticipate that they're going to look to start vertical construction in the models sometime this fall. This project is a 242-unit townhome development that was originally approved under 2005 annexation warrant. There is an 18, 15-and-a-half-acre commercial component to that as well that would be coming in the future. Oops. Future and ongoing projects, we are still reviewing the building code amendments. The 2015 Property Maintenance Code was actually adopted in 2016. We wanted to move that one forward, because we had some things regarding occupancy of units that we wanted to get in place. We are finishing these up, subject to staffability. Again, once we have the new person in place, that'll free up some time. So I anticipate we'll be presenting that to the committee at some point in the next few months for consideration and adoption. Certified Local Government application, we have completed the review with the Historic Preservation Commission on this. We are waiting for some final information relating to resumes from some of the commissioners and try and put all the package together. It's a little bit of an interesting application, the way you have to put it together, so it does take a little time to make sure that you're getting all the information they're looking for. So we anticipate that will be submitted in the next month or two as well. Land use planning, we adopted amendments to the comprehensive land use plan in the North Washington area, north of Gore Street. That was around the area of the Mobile Home Park and the car dealership. We considered some changes in the Prairie Combs area, east of Kirk Road and south of Prairie Path. However, we dropped that, because most of the impetus for making changes was assuming that we were going to have some other types of land use changes, because some developers are proposing more single-family residential for that project. Since that has gone by the wayside, there really wasn't a need to change the land use plan, we felt that still met what would be appropriate based on the uses that are going to be built there. So we dropped that one. We initiated a rezoning of several properties on South Mallory to reflect the West Town area. The second area is under consideration, we talked about earlier tonight. We are also considering a city-initiated rezoning for properties on East Wilson Street that would allow certain properties that better match existing land uses. We have a lot of properties that are existing duplexes or two-flats, and we're looking to change that zoning in that area potentially to make those units conforming as opposed to being legally non-conforming. So if they burn down, then they could rebuild as a two-unit building. We do initiate zoning map amendments for several properties several times a year when time permits. We have detention basins and other things that we've annexed with the default R0 zoning, and so we try to bring those into compliance as time and staff time permits. And then the zoning code, as we did also talk about tonight, we do revise, review and revise the zoning code periodically. We maintain what we informally call a list of things that we feel that we need to look at at some point in time, and so we do throw those onto the plant commission agenda for review and consideration. And then if those move forward, then those are brought to you also for changes. So a lot of the things that we brought for you, forward to you tonight, were things that were on that list as well. Then the other thing I did want to touch on real briefly was some of the grants that we received. We do typically try to apply for grants when we can. So one of the ones that we received was the grant from the Illinois Housing Development Authority, that was for $50,000. It's the abandoned property program, which allows us to use those funds to either restore the exterior of certain buildings, demo them, clean up the properties on the outside and the inside in certain cases, mow lawns, those types of things. So if it's an abandoned structure, one that has, you know, not paid their taxes and things like that, that's considered abandoned, and we can use those funds for that. There is no match on that, so that is a pure grant. The only way we have to pay any of that back is if we are reimbursed for it. So if we mow something that's leaned, and then they pay us back for that, then we have to reimburse the state for those types of funds. So that's a two-year program. We just had a webinar with them today about the actual reimbursements, and so we're working on doing that for some projects. The great thing about this is we can actually go back to January 1st of 2016. So we can go back quite a ways to, for expenses that we still haven't recaptured, to get some money back for that. So that's a great program. So that's the one grant. And the other one is, we just got notification from the county that we did get community development block grant funding for $75,000 for roadway improvements in the Gore and North River Street area for resurfacing. So that is $75,000, which is about 37% of the total road improvement cost. So we got that, because that area, we did an income survey, that was found to be a low-moderant income area, and so we were able to successfully obtain those grant funds. We've managed to obtain a number of grants over the several years. I think we've had at least four years of successful grant applications, so it seems to be a pretty good program for us to do. And we're running out of projects in our designated low-moderant income areas, but they do allow us to do what are called income surveys, and we're looking at areas to do that for next year's program, to see if we can still continue on with this program for road and maybe even sidewalk improvements. And that's it.
Just a quick... Can you go back to that one under the land use planning? What are you referring to with the West Town Subarea Plan?
The West Town Subarea Plan is what we had just talked about tonight, you know, with the rezoning. So we have, you know, different land uses that were designated when we amended the comprehensive plan, when we did the TIF. And so we're looking at some of those areas. And just like the South Mallory area that we did with the old dual building and the Master Cast property, that was one of the areas that we looked at. So there's several properties in that area that we can look at for, you know, possible zoning changes if it makes sense. So that's what we're, you know, considering as we go along.
So do we have to do anything with any changes to that approved plan, because that was the ordinance that was passed?
If it's a substantial deviation from the plan, then you should, you don't have to make the zoning match the comprehensive plan, that's not a specific requirement. You try to as best as you can, just because you want to be consistent. But if we, you know, wanted to go ahead and amend the comprehensive plan, the West Area Subarea Plan to say community commercial, we can do that, too.
Well, actually, the reason why I ask is that those parcel that we put, the proposed land use was, half of it was residential.
Correct, yes.
So that is a huge change of not only going from residential to neighborhood commercial, but now we're talking CC.
Right. And that was one of the things that we had talked about, is whether we wanted to try and rezone part of the property one way and part of it the other way. And I think what that does is that creates a non-conforming use that probably isn't desirable, because now if we put that in a resident, if we put the south half of those properties into a residential district, you can only use it for residential purposes. So we felt that based on the current conditions, it would make more sense to keep it all within one zoning district. However, if the property should redevelop in the future, then that would be a compelling reason to say, let's go ahead and rezone that south area to residential, to perhaps allow for expansion of residential uses from the south.
And that's why I just want to make sure that we're following what is already an approved plan from 2016, that we're complying with that and what the latter of that... Do we need to make any changes is just what I want to confirm that we're doing, because as was said, developers rely upon those documents.
Right.
Well, it's not just developers, because there are, there could be housing developers that may have looked at that and said, oh, that's the proposed land use for that. I don't want to walk into another, wait, I've got your TIF redevelopment agreement that's already passed as an ordinance, and I wanted to build houses there.
Right. Well, I think if somebody, I mean, let's assume for the moment somebody did come in and say, you know what, I want to build houses on the south half of that property. We would certainly have justification to rezone that south part of the property for residential, because that's what it shows in the comprehensive plan, in the subarea plan. So if, let's say, the greenhouse property redevelops with residential, that would then be a logical extension potentially for expanding residential uses further north if those property owners at that time wished to do so.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Question from the public?
Carl Dinwiddie, 1156 Pine Street. And as you know, I always try to start with something positive, and I find these mid-year reports very positive. It's a chance for the public to hear what's going on with all the city departments... It's a chance for the public to hear what's going on with all the city departments, and so I find that very useful. One thing with this one presentation, as late as 6:30, I looked for, all the rest doesn't have PDFs and things you can click on before you come to the meeting. This one didn't. I tried to click on both agendas at 6:30, and nothing happened. I mean, there was no place to get a PDF for this presentation that was just given. Everybody else had one, so this comment. Second, or third, whatever, since Scott opened the door on historic properties, I would like to say the last Historic Preservation Commission hearing that I went to, I was very disappointed. I don't know what the council has to do, anything with some of these commissions that are appointed by the mayor, if you have any oversight ability or not. But the Preservation Commission was given, long before the meeting, eight criteria that the Department of Interior uses when they try to evaluate whether a property is historic or not. They did not use any of them. The other thing, they created new terms. One of the terms they created is the new old. Now, there's a new old category. So where I'm headed with this, I would like to see the commission codify with objective standards they're going to apply to any property that they're going to consider when they hold a hearing or meet to talk about what should be historic or not. Thank you.
Scott, real quick, don't we already have that as far as conforming, contributing, non-contributing, and significant are really the classifications? And then the criteria are listed for each one of those categories?
Right, right. Yeah, and so I don't know if Jeff wants to chime in on that. But that is how it is structured. Each building has one of those three classifications as part of the analysis.
Yeah, and the Secretary of the Interior's standards are part of the codified establishment of the commission in the district.
So when we look at a building, whether it's contributing or significant, those parts are already in there in the code?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then also one other thing, my presentation, I tried clicking on it too, and it didn't pop up, so that's why I had it on there. It was on last, the prior committee, the Holes', and that's why it apparently didn't pop up. So it was just not on here.
I don't know, can we change an agenda after it goes in to add those links, so that at least the links are there, so if people want to see it online, they can find it?
Sure.
Okay, if we can get that, I'm going to get that on there. Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Sylvia Keppl, 1420 Becker Avenue. Just a quick question regarding the adjudication of violations. I was wondering how that was affected by the August 2015 municipal code amendment by Public Act 99-293 that gives non-home rural municipalities more power to establish a code hearing department? We can review it.
I don't know, I can't answer here right now how that affects it. I'm not that aware of that particular statute, so.
It just says from when I was researching before that there was an amendment in 2015 that allows non-home rural municipalities to handle some of that, so they don't have to go to the circuit court and incur all those costs. And as well, they can regain some of the lost costs from the code violator. They would be, they could have a, it would be, the fees would be incumbent on the violator to have to pay to the city. And that's, what is it, Public Act 99-293.
Thank you. Okay. Chris, you're up next.
First of all, just so you know that this mid-year report is focusing on commercial industrial development, both existing, recent I should say, as well as proposed and targeted. That's not to say there hasn't been considerable development and approvals with respect to residential development. Obviously, the city is going to be looking at several hundred new residential units over the next three or four or five years, and that does have economic impact on the city. Certainly, housing units mean rooftops, which mean buying power, which means consumption and assessed value. So economic development, I should say, housing development is a great thing to bolster economic development in the commercial industrial area. Okay, I've kind of broken this down, first talking about downtown Batavia. The projects you see that are shown on the list, as well as their corresponding stars, represent activity that's occurred since January through July alone. So I'm not going to read the list for you, but you all have a packet now to take with you home. But it's, I think it's pretty impressive. What you see on this map, it's generated through CoStar Analytics, and the gray marks, diamonds if you will, represent properties that have shown up on CoStar over the years and still exist as buildings with spaces. The dark blue diamonds reflect available spaces that are currently on the market, and the stars, again, represent the projects that you see in that list. I wanted to point out the significant retail sighting opportunities that are out in front of us that we're going to be focusing on, and the list represents those properties and the corresponding letters on the map depict where those properties are located. So none of those should surprise you. They're all, I believe, strategic critical properties in downtown that we should be targeting for occupancy, and we are. Here, from statistics, as they represent the downtown, it's basically all good news. And I think you're going to find that most of the slides you'll see tonight are good news. And it's not because necessarily yours truly, it's not necessarily because Batavia is the greatest place to be, but it is a great place to be, or we'd see no good news, or very little. But generally speaking, and I think our business retention survey reflected this, the number one reason businesses are doing well is the economy is doing well. So as you see, but particularly, let's look at downtown Batavia over the last five years. All you can see is the vacancy rate going down. Rent rates are going up. So these are good things. Absorptions are positive. The period of time where one can expect a property to be held on a listing, that's been reduced over time. So, again, good news. I do want to say that you see a slight drop in asking rent rates, and that's basically because of the 54,000 square feet that's available out there now. The pale Joey's building alone represents 11,000 square feet, or about 20%. And although the Joey's asking rent is not public, CoStar estimates it to be between $11 and $13 a square foot. And that tends to suppress the asking rent rates for the town generally, because it's such a large portion of the available rent space. And the reason it's at lower rent than you typically see in the 12 to 15 rent rates is because you're looking at 11,000 square feet. So there's an economy of scale there.
Chris, are these net, the asking price?
These are net. In terms of the Randall Road Corridor, here again, I've shown with stars and adjacent a list of buildings, the new projects that have been developed just in the last seven months. So, again, good news, filling some decent spaces with some very good retailers. It's just positive information. Here are target sites that we'll be looking at especially hard. They're, again, strategically located, they're larger sites, and there's some significant vacancies there. And the vacancies are represented parenthetically at the end of each shopping center or property itself. So, again, if you have any questions while we're going through this, I'd be happy to help you with them, but I didn't want to spend too much time belaboring it. Here again, even the vacancy rates are dropping nicely, except, whoa, what happened? Well, I'll tell you what happened. That's 130,000 square feet known as Sam's. So I thought I'd put on that, the chart where I show number of buildings, the total square feet vacancy rates and asking rent rates, how that has changed, just because Sam's alone has come on the vacancy list. So things happen, that happened. Still, the asking rent rates have been climbing, and that's a good sign. I'm going to turn now to the Northeast Business Park. The strongest part of the economy regionally, and this is particularly true with the subregionally area with Chicagoland, is the industrial warehousing marketplace, and we've talked about that before. And we're seeing a lot of that activity, you know, in a big ways, just in this year alone. So this is the new activity since January. Lots of space being filled, key businesses, many of those are expansions, some of them are brand-new, some are under the radar and just, you know, two brokers got together. I didn't hear about it until it showed up on CoStar, you know, as a lease. So, believe me, I think when the city's doing their job best, they go right to lease. And we're, you know, we're not having to solve big problems, because the marketplace is in control. But we do obviously tend to a lot of calls, a lot of inquiries, get with each other in terms of the community development and public works and the various development review staff with economic development. And having, you know, the squirrel fit the round hole, that's what needs to happen, and I think it's been a successful year to date, no question about it. When I first put this together, I was not able to list the Castellum Solutions. I knew it was imminent, but imminent lasted like a month and a half on that lease. So, you know, you didn't see it in the announcements, the weekly budget, the weekly reports, for instance, but they did finally go public with it a couple weeks ago, and so that's great news. I mean, you got a brand-new building at 1250 Douglas, finding a brand-new tenant at 25,000 square feet that happens to be a Batavia business expansion. So it's a win-win, you know? The guy went out there and he literally specced a building at 137,000 square feet, and within six months of, well, less than that in terms of its availability for occupancy, he focused logistics at 625, that's the move from West Chicago, and then Castellum Solutions. So he's down to 50,000 square feet, and there's still additional activity at that building. I just mentioned those two, because I think it's kind of neat when someone goes out there and specs his own money or his financing institution's money and can fill it that quickly. Again, it's a sign of how hot the market is. Those are the corresponding locations on the map for those, the list you just saw. For terms of targeting, we have our existing permitted buildings, existing or permitted, in other words, they've been approved for the construction, that we want to try to fill. 901 Douglas is the building. I'm sorry, that should read 100,000 square feet. But that's the building proposed at Redant and Douglas, 950 Douglas, those should be converted, inverted I should say. 950 is actually the Rubicon Building, which we've had some recent inquiries and walkthroughs. Oh, I'm, now I get it. That's the remaining space, like in the case of 1250. So you have 601, that of course is the former Party Light Building. Then we have proposed new developments in these properties. They're essentially sites that are vacant, but, you know, I think I showed you once before the map that there's very few sites that are still available, and there's like no sites greater than 15 acres that are vacant. So we have a limited number of available buildings with space and a very limited number of available properties that are vacant for redevelopment. Again, it's a sign of the hot industrial market. And here again, the statistics are what you expect them to be, based on, you know, how prosperous this market has been. You see the asking rent rates, you see a drop in vacancy and then suddenly a rise. That's reflected of the 601 building, the old Party Light Building, when that then vacant, and the result was also a, an effect on the marketplace with respect to asking prices. When you get property that, the market out there is about $4.50 to $4.90 a square foot. When you combine a building at Paramount with the Party Light Building, that amounts to about 85% of the vacancy. Those two buildings equal together about 650,000 square feet. And those together, I think, are renting, asking rents at 375 and 385 respectively. So those two buildings, they represent such a large percentage of the available space, and their rent rates are, asking rates are so low, because they're so large, that it tends to suppress the asking rent rates. So that's why you see, contrary to the vacancy rate going down, and you consider supply and demand, the asking rent rates have dipped because of those two buildings in the last six months. So I think that pretty much concludes my remarks. I did want to, did want to mention a couple other things. New developments in other areas, you have Funways' expansion, you have a property on Mallory, Ken &amp; Tyler Hook bought that building, the dual-due building, they're proposing to build a sign museum there. New project out at 913 Wilson, and then one at 1,000 East Wilson. These two projects, one is Villa &amp; Farm, that's a woman who had a business starting in Oswego and had been looking at the other locations downtown. In fact, she made an offer to use the Two East Wilson Townley Building, but at that time, the city was entering into an agreement to sell it. So then she looked at the Tin Shop Building north of Tus Thai and actually considered renting that, but once we realized we didn't want a long-term, well, she would have bought it, but we didn't want to sell it for fear that someone would later want to develop all of the property on the other side of Larson Becker, on the east side of the street, and then we'd have to buy it all over again, à la the Fisher Project, where we had to buy a building that we wished we didn't have to. So she persevered, and she really wanted to be in downtown Batavia, because she really likes the Batavia commercial market. And so she instead went out to 935 East Wilson, under the name of Villa Farm, and then we had two ladies, as you remember, that wanted to use the Townley Building and incubator space to put a, and made a proposal to put a business in where they taught kids computer coding. And they couldn't get that building, but they, again, persevered, as did Villa &amp; Farm, and they're at 1,000 East Wilson Street, and it's called Code Crays. Finally, we've had some good news of 1300 Amcor, I'm sorry, 1300 South River, the old Amcor Building. There is a contract in play to purchase that building. Regional locally, businesses looking to purchase and relocate there. At 2310 West Fabian, you know, the problem is I had this on, I had a glitch, and I was going to hit the wrong button, I think, but then they are listed there. So these are the projects I'm discussing and mentioning, that they're miscellaneous, but they're positive projects on our horizon. We have some miscellaneous parcels that we're looking to redevelop in West Main Street. Obviously, the largest parcel is zone, well, planned and essentially zone commercial, is a southwest corner of Fabian and Kirk, the Joe Keim property, that's a 40-acre piece. And then the southeast corner, Kirk and Wind Energy Pass, which is actually in the Prairie Commons project, is 15 acres, and we're looking to develop that as well. I did want to make one other note, a couple other notes. We ran some ads this last fall, I'm sorry, this spring rather, and they recently published this. Heartland Real Estate Business is a very well-recognized commercial trade business, real estate journal, and we had a couple of things happening here. We got involved in a program that was made available to communities, a couple of states even participated, and it's their 2018 Economic Development Supplement. And again, this is a six-state magazine, and we purchased an ad, but they also provided us the opportunity to write an advertorial, and so this is how it came out. You know, I think it You know, I think it's both well-done, and, you know, it got good placement, and it was a good buy for the city. We also then recently-
Chris, if I could just mention, we had a meeting this week with a property owner and her broker, who is from Jones Lang LaSalle, and she actually brought that Hartland article up during our meeting, saying she was working out over the weekend and flipping through there, and she noticed this beautiful spread on the city of Batavia, and she learned a lot about us through reading it. So, that was a very good placement that you obtained for us.
Yeah, it's, the article called "Introducing Batavia's Explosive Growth." We talked about the downtown, commercial development generally, industrial development, mentioned the Fermilab project, and then the last paragraph, obviously, is a plug to "Grow Your Business in Town." So, we're also participating, this is the last comment I wanted to make, in the summit on September 7th, it's the annual Real Estate Journal Retail and Mixed Use Trade Show. Laura and I and Anthony are going down there. We got a good buy on a table that allowed us to put out some material, and also got a full-page ad in this journal, and this is well-circulated as well. So, you know, we're getting the word out. There are a lot of good things to talk about, and it's hope it continues on a roll. I think we'll have more good news based on, if they're not near imminent, they're pretty close. A couple of targeted sites that we went over just now, that I think we'll see some development to announce at this fall.
All right. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Now on to Public Works.
Floor's yours, Gary. You've got 12 minutes.
12 minutes? I'll start off there. I did send an email yesterday to City Council. It is not my intention to go through all these lists tonight, point by point. I did want to get that information to council, I wanted to get that information to the public, but we don't need to have me read bullet point by bullet point tonight on some of these long lists.
Um, yeah, that's interesting.
It's funny. Formating?
I prefer when people read me the slides. I'm kidding.
Why is that in the middle of the presentation?
I wonder if there's a different way to open it, Gary, if you went to the City Council agenda?
Yeah, I may have to do that.
Yeah.
The formatting issue has some work, so.
That's kind of odd.
It is.
Let's try this. That should be fine. I'll do it that way.
And then I think if you put it on a page and you hit the down button, it might advance by an, oh, I forget how it advances, by a whole page.
Yeah, I may have to do it this way.
Oh, boy.
It works outside.
Okay, make the full page full-size.
If you download it as a file and open it with the user.
Yeah, that's it. It's like, how did, oh, boy.
It's got lightning out there.
Oh, yeah. Starting to fire.
Oop. I don't have permission to do that.
The desktop.
The desktop?
Yeah.
12653, everyone remember that?
I'm sorry. I think it's over there. Well, the mid-lines go to desktop.
Yeah.
The reason why I gave you 12 minutes is because in 13 minutes, we're not going to be able to walk out of the building. We'll swim out.
I won't.
Is the page displayed?
I'll give you a ride.
I disagree. I think we do a good job with stormwater.
I'm sorry. Full screen, there we go.
Yeah, all right. We're in business.
So, Public Works.
Gary, before you get started, this storm reminds me of something that I'd like to say about Public Works is many of the jobs here at City Hall are typically those where people are working from 8 to 5. And in Public Works, it's a whole nother story, that they just need to be available at a moment's notice when severe weather hits, like May hit tonight, as much as some people, and some people's animals hate the thunder and lightning. Just think of those events where there are power outages, that our linemen go outside in weather like this to restore people's power and drive 15 hours in snowplows to take care of our streets and make sure that we're safe. And I just wanted to say how much we appreciate that.
Thank you. We are responsible for the city's facilities, fleet, infrastructure, and natural resources. Our department's planning horizon is typically 20, 50, 100-plus years. I bring that up, and I've said that to you guys before. I mean, we really, we really have to follow a philosophy of doing something, doing it right, and then trying to be done with it. We're responsible for today's residents, but we really also have to look out for those of the next generation. We've got seven divisions, Water and Sewer, Streets, Wastewater, Electric, Engineering, Buildings and Grounds, and Admin. 64 and a half employees, of which 45 of those are field, three and a half administrative, 14 professionals, which include like myself and the engineers and the superintendents, and then two part-time contractual employees. We get funding from the general fund, and then you see the other funds up there as well. Obviously, the general and the enterprise funds are the big funds for us. Our capital, our department budget is about 36 million. That excludes, doesn't include, like, the 2018 wastewater project, which is improving the wastewater treatment plant, and also doesn't include purchased power. So, if you throw those two in there, that's about another $60 million that goes to our overall budget. So, Streets Division, and again, I'm not going to go through the list of everything just in detail. I wanted to show you kind of the whole scope of what they and what every division is responsible for. 16 field staff members, one full-time administrative assistant and a part-time administrative assistant, and then the superintendent and assistant superintendent. This is a division where there will be a recommendation for additional field staff member after the One Washington Place parking structure is completed. It's going to be a 300-and-some-odd space parking garage that's going to take a fair amount of maintenance effort in and of itself. So, that's probably a couple of years out yet before we'd be making and looking at that recommendation. I bring up this topic only because you guys asked Police and Fire, and I wanted to cover it under Public Works. This is similar for all divisions, so I'll just do it one time here. Our overtime and our double time are dependent upon things like seasonal conditions, you know, how often it snows in the winter time. We have no control over that. Other factors, 4th of July, it rained, so we had a whole full setup on the 4th of July, paid double time to everyone, and then they all had to come back out again the next night. Again, something kind of beyond our control. We have very limited scheduled overtime. We have scheduled overtime for special events, things like the 4th of July. We also have scheduled overtime in Streets for leaf season. Electric may get some scheduled overtime to help an industrial customer because they have to have their business shut down on a Sunday morning in order to do some work. But besides that, we don't schedule overtime. It's not a regular practice in Public Works. We don't use overtime for minimum staffing, such as they do in Police and Fire, because they're a 24/7 operation. So, anyways, I wanted to cover that, and that's typical for all of our divisions. Again, listing of items that Streets Division is responsible for. The infrastructure, the fleet, you'll see a number of divisions, I list the Public Works building because we're all housed out there, the various divisions are. They also, of course, oversee the cemeteries, 10,000-plus Parkway trees. So, I mean, there's just a listing of things that, you know, 16 field guys have to take responsible for. For 2018, we did budget the cemetery columbarium. That's been delayed, but it will still be on track, hopefully still this fall. The Area 3 construction went right through that driveway, so we didn't want to have two projects going at once. Our fuel dispensers at Public Works are, I believe, original to the building, so the late 1980s. So, we need new fuel dispensers out there and work in order to bring our fuel operation up to current state fire marshal codes. And then we did repeat, or complete, the implementation of the Fox River Trail, wave-finding signage, which is now, should find it consistent from Oswego all the way up through the northern end of King County. I mean, they've tried to make everything consistent. Also budgeted for 2018, Fleet additions, that's got hands overseas, downtown sidewalks right outside the window here, the Island Avenue sidewalk expansion on the west side of the road, and also then Wilson Street over between Lincoln and Batavia Avenue. Again, more items for, oops, sorry. More items for 2018, solid waste contract, of course, we all know about that. Streets, Water, and Engineering have all done a ton of work in Area 3 and Ward 1 this year. Implemented the household hazardous waste program, and then a couple of ordinance issues. Again, more annual maintenance activities. I want to give you that information, I'll let you read through that. In 2019, we may have the columbarium construction carrying over, we'll see how far we get on that this fall. Next year, we've got the brush collection, mosquito abatement, and east side property maintenance, which is the mowing, lawn mowing contracts that we have. Annual fleet replacements that we'll be doing, and then as well as Streets will provide support. There's big projects going on next year with Ward 1, Area 3, the Deer Path and Main Project, as well as the Main Street Project. So, Streets Division will be providing a lot of support to those major projects. Water and Sewer Division, obviously oversees both of our freshwater and our sanitary sewer. They have eight field staff, one full-time administrative assistant, and then the superintendent. They're also housed at Public Works, and they have, and those are the dates that the facilities are either remodeled or constructed. The water treatment plant originally constructed in 1994 with a major expansion and remodeling in 2007. A listing of all the things those eight field guys have to be responsible for. Oops. Sanitary sewer as well. And then for 2018, we've talked with you about Well 6 and 8, and Well 6 is now complete. That was the well that failed and expanded the scope of the project. Well 8, we had to wait until Well 6 was completed. We didn't want to take down Well 8 while people are still trying to water their lawns here through August. So, Well 8 will go in the fall. Ward 1 and Area 3, Jeremy has been extremely busy in those two projects, doing all the water main work associated with those projects. Also, in 2018, we've got the cast-in-place sewer lining that's coming up, SCADA work that Howard talked with you about, and our meter replacement program continues on. Lead service lines, this will be a separate discussion for a separate night, but the city is working with private property owners right now to replace their lead service lines on the private side, as we go in and we disturb those lines or replace those lines on the public side. We did work with Kevin General's office to do basically a brief one-page legal. In essence, what we're doing is assisting them in getting the service line to their house, and then they have to take care of all the plumbing associated with getting that into their house. But we're trying to work with homeowners to make that happen because it's in everyone's best interest to get rid of those old lead lines. Jeremy did want me to mention this other item on there. We may be required to dose more chlorine into the system, and if that comes, it'll be much like the fluoride. We often get questions on fluoride, why do we add fluoride? Well, we add fluoride because it's a state law. We have to add fluoride. This will be the same thing. This is going to result in an aesthetic, a taste and odor issue. In other words, people are going to be able to smell more chlorine in the water, but if it becomes state law, we don't have a choice. That's what we'll have to do. These are the annual maintenance activities that they do. And for 2019, they've got some big projects. The Kirk and Fabian intersection is going to be underway, that's a KDOT project, but a large portion of water main, the one that broke last Friday evening, is part of that project to be relocated. Main Street, obviously, has got a huge water main and sanitary component to it. Ward 1, Area 3 continues next year, and the other projects. The radium sludge pond liner, that's out at the water treatment plant. Those of you who have visited, that's on the west side. It's the, kind of the pond that's out there with just synthetic liner today, and we probably need to get that replaced with a concrete liner at some point in time. Waste Water Division, Byram is here tonight. He obviously oversees the wastewater treatment plant and all of our lift stations. He's got five guys who work for him, a part-time administrative assistant, and then a part-time right now contractual lab technician. The administrative assistant used to be a full-time position, that was reduced during the economic downturn in 2009, 2010. The contractual lab position was actually eliminated, well, it was made a part-time position and then eliminated and then brought back as a contractual position. And the recommendation for the 2019 budget is to eliminate the contractual position and replace it now with a new full-time staff member. Some of that is, as a result of this project we're just completing, some of that is as a result of the other new requirements which are coming onboard for phosphorus and nitrogen. We simply have more testing, we simply have more lab work we have to do, and we've been barely getting by on the contractual for the last couple of years. So, we just need to finally fill that position with a full-time position. It's been kind of, again, brought along for the last several years with the economic downturn. They have the treatment facilities, parts of which date back to the late 1930s, and of course, going all the way up to this year, lift stations, and obviously, they take care of the Fox River. We have a discharge permit that they must meet all the requirements for. The Phase 1 of the treatment plant improvements, Gary talks to you about that every single month, so I don't need to get into that in too much detail. Phases 2 and 3 will result in a new headworks, it'll address those phosphorus and nitrogen requirements, and eventually, we'll do a capacity to support community development and redevelopment. Also in 2019, we're looking at some SCADA upgrades for the lift stations, rehabilitation, small rehabilitation of Out and Randall Road, and then that full-time lab technician. And I wanted to touch on this center paragraph, it's my only paragraph, normally I'm like in the bullet points. But we built this plant and we designed this plant, and everyone thinks the plant will run one way, but much like other big operations, they kind of take on a life of their own. And when you, when you, when you get one up and running, it has a personality, and you got to figure it out. And so, there's going to be those things like chemicals or utilities, disposal costs that are all going to be a little variable for the first couple of years while we figure out how to tweak that plant. So, we will be having those in the budget, but I won't be surprised to tell you that after the end of 2019, some of those will be changed going into the 2020 budget. Water and wastewater, I've put recommendations for rate increases in 2019. We expect rate increases in both of those utilities going into 2019. If you recall, we had a study done that had recommended five-year rate increases, and I think council at that, or six-year, I can't remember, I apologize. I think council at that time had not recommended, I think it was five years, and they only had recommended three years of increases, but we still need increases. So, even though we're ending those three years, we're going to still need rate increases for both of the utilities. Electric Division, 14 field staff members, that includes like the warehouse person as well, the lineman. We have a part-time administrative assistant that provides services to electric, she provides services to me, she provides services to engineering. So, in her 30 hours a week, she kind of handles all of us. Four professionals, that's the engineers and the operations manager. Of course, their facilities, the various substations and infrastructure. We've talked with you about the Northeast Substation, those, we just brought you to complete those contracts. There'll also be a transmission line up there. The Colonial Village overhead project was finally completed this year, and we're currently working in Highlands on an overhead construction project. Windmill Cove, which has been on the books for several years, that design is completed. We're probably going to push that construction to 2019. We may even push that construction to 2020, and I'll talk about that here in a second. SCADA system upgrade, that is scheduled for 2018, but the lead times, if such, that is probably going to get extended out to 2019. Dam signage and lighting, that's currently under construction, I'll talk about that in a second. And then fiber optic extension is going in the fall. Some additional items for 2018 that we've talked with you about in just the last couple of weeks. Northeast Sub Reconstruction, that will be a big part of 2019. The Highlands will continue. Lowerland Apartments, we've had a number of faults out there. That's a blink. That's another blink. It's like a recloser. They come in an hour, if it blinks the third time, we don't want to know that. Lowerland Apartments, they, we've had some faults out there, much like we had at the Batavia Apartments, and we finally had to do a big underground project, so that may get moved up to 2019. Right now, it's targeted for 2020, but we may play with that one in Windmill Cove. I do have on there a rate increase in 2019, and we have to look at that from a cash flow standpoint. We have a lot of capital projects. If we can work it from a cash flow standpoint and from our reserves, then we can forego a rate- and from our reserves, then we can forego a rate increase in 2019 and probably push it off to 2020, because our purchase power costs are going to be going down again. So that rate increase is still very much tentative. Engineering, obviously, they are responsible for our overall infrastructure, regulatory compliance, that's just the five engineers, that is the, the civil engineers and engineering technicians. They work out at Public Works, and again, a listing of all the things that they oversee. Those things budgeted for 2018, I know the mayor is especially interested in these things. So Deer Path and Main Street will go out for bid in November here, and construction in 2019. Prairie Street will, on all likelihood, be having Phase One engineering completed, will bring the options to you in September, then they'll move into Phase Two engineering. By January of 2020, we'll be letting it for bid and construction in 2020. Main Street, again, same thing, will come to you with plans in September here, and be ready to let it for bid in January of 19, and construction next year. I put the last bullet point on there, because everyone needs to be aware that Main Street, from Water to Van Artwick, really from Water to Randall, in essence, is going to be one-way traffic next year. So that's going to be a disruption to the traffic flow in town. Ward One drainage improvements, you guys know, know a lot about that, what's going on. Wilson College, Area Three, you've got almost $3 million between Area Three and Ward One going on this summer of storm sewer improvements. Fox River, our Fermi Lab Stormwater Basin in Mahoney Creek, we're currently working on conceptual engineering, that's a project that hopefully, we could still squeeze in under the bond amount at the end of, end of the bond. These are things that we're also working on, that you guys have all been talked about in, in recent weeks, the McKee Street and Batavia Avenue issues related to pedestrians and speeding, the new developments, and then all the annual programs. The big projects are up there listed for 2019, those are all the major capital projects. Safe routes to school was not one we've talked about in the past, we may get funding for that, we still have to kind of work through that, but that, that's potential recommendation for 2019. And then again, I'm not going to work through these, these are a lot of the same ones, but I, but I wanted to show you the dollars associated with them. Again, you've got another, you know, $1.2 million just in, in Ward One, and another $1.7 million in Ward Three. So you've got another, you know, $3 million going next year for those projects. Roadway program, that's an interesting issue that we do need to talk with you about, we have a big gap in our roadway funding, and Peggy has mentioned that more than once. We have a real issue there with respect to how we're going to continue to fund our roadway program, and I'll come back to that. Those are the future, future 2020 projects. Buildings and grounds, obviously oversee all of our facilities, we have two full-time people and then a contractual in the form of John Dillon. They do City Hall, they do Public Works, Public Works Warehouse, the food pantry. Windows and masonry were obviously part of the 2018 budget. Fire suppression system, this was one that we discovered as part of our design of the remodeling. The fire suppression system is currently under construction in the police garage, we discovered that the existing original system was never adequate for what was out there. So the building department, the fire department, and our contractor all, all agreed that the system really needed to be rebuilt to prevent the spread of fire should a fire occur in the garage. So that was something that we kind of found that was a, was a significant issue. We've been working on a lead paint issue, which is the annular space amongst the, in the drop ceiling areas throughout City Hall. We're working to, with a consultant, to develop standard operating procedures for working up in that annular space, to prevent a, to minimize and eliminate personnel exposures up there. Obviously, the design for the interior remodeling was completed in 2017, and that project was put on hold this year. We are going to recommend that it come back again in 2019. Roof restraint system, also, the single story was completed in 2017, we need to bring back structural analysis for that, for the three-story portion of this building. All of the air quality improvements at Public Works were done this year, and that also included new insulation, that included LED lighting, occupancy sensors, electrical work to separate out our regular and emergency generator circuits, new cabling. So the second floor of Public Works is pretty much taken care of, we have similar projects we need to do on the first floor of Public Works. Coming down the pipeline, we have a major roof project that's going to happen at Public Works. The original metal roof is from 1989, so it's approaching the end of its life, that needs to get replaced in the next couple of years. Garage floor drains are, are, have basically slowly corroded themselves to the point where we no longer can even get a flushing rod, a flusher through there, so those need to get replaced. And then we did build this year in 2018, a new fiber communications hub out there in one of the, one of the rooms, so we now have a, a node out there for fiber, fiber vendors that come into. Food pantry, if you recall, early in the year, we talked about possibilities to relocate that, I think the decision's basically been made to keep it where it is, so we need to do some roof repairs on that next year. These are all contractual things that, again, Kevin kind of oversees all this stuff, one person, so he's got, he's got his hands full. I just kind of went through most of those projects. And then Advent is myself, I'm it. And obviously, responsible for overall department oversight, I do serve as the city's NIPA representative, and also the Public Works Mutual Aid Network representative. Dam signage and lighting, we do have, that project is currently underway, if I really get adventurous, I could go there right now, hang on.
Gary, with regard to that mutual aid network, over the course of the last year, you, that actually was implemented, and you supported a town that had a tornado touchdown, is that right?
Yes. Ottawa and then, and then the plate, which was next to Ottawa, so I was the operations person, so I was the one who kind of coordinated getting all the communities in there to bring all their resources to that, to that. And I served that role, I'm doing it again in October, so occasionally, I, I, I do serve as operations person, that's kind of my role in, in NIPA.
It's nice to know that that is such a strong network and it works so well.
The reason why I'm bringing this up and I'm taking a detour is I want, and you don't have to see this in detail, really, you just have to notice the fact that there are a number of signs here, out at the end of Riverine, and at the dam, and by the gazebo. You have to notice that there's more signs going up the bank on each side. So when these signs come in, and they get installed, it's going to make a change to the aesthetic out there. Part of that is on purpose, I mean, because we, we do want to be sensitive to the scenic views and be sensitive to people's enjoyment, that's important, but it's also important that we notify people of the danger, the potential danger that does exist with that dam. So there's, there's a balance out there, and I, I'm, I'm almost guaranteeing that you're going to see comments on certain social media sites saying, why is the city putting up all these ugly signs? We're putting up these ugly signs and hopefully trying to notify people of a hazard. I was telling Laurel when I was out there with the contractor about a week and a half ago, a gentleman was out there with two of his toddlers, and I don't, I mean, I literally toddlers, they had to be two or three years old, walking down the face of the dam. And then, so, I mean, I feel a lot better if we had signs up there which said, danger, don't do this, if he made that decision then. So there's a reason why these signs are going up. I got reports that there was somebody with a stroller out on the dam earlier in the spring. All right, so that's administration. Personnel, we did have one accident of significance this year in Public Works, and we're currently following up on that. The reason why I bring that up is that's a, that's a, an issue that all divisions take very seriously, basically a safety culture, all the guys receive safety training once a month on various topics, we have some topics that are required by IDOL, but we have many other topics that we do on our own. So that is something that I just wanted to bring you up, up aware of, that, that we take as a serious thing. We've had resignations, I think you should be aware that we've had one retirement and one resignation of linemen this year, and thank you to council, you guys let us hire apprentices in 2015. So basically, the two people who have left, or will leave, are now already accounted for in the form of those two apprentices. So we, we already have some three-year experienced apprentices that can step right into these positions, and we don't need to be hiring new linemen. We did have one of our crew leaders actually retire this year, and he was replaced with an internal candidate, and in a few short weeks, we'll be starting up negotiations, again, with our two bargaining units. We only had one, one-year contracts with them. These are my roles on NIPA and NIPA man, again, I don't need to go through those in detail. 2019, I think we're only starting to see the, the beginning of the, of the numbers of retirements, in, in Public Works especially, we're going to have a, a big turnover in the next decade. And then, of course, the next steps, the One Washington Place project, those are going to be things that come up for the 2019. The last couple of slides, I would like to just spend a couple moments on, because I went back through the 2018 budget presentation, which would have been given almost a year ago now, and one of the things that was talked about in that presentation was the fact that the city was going to jump into strategic planning that would then guide our budget for future years. And so throughout the course of this year, you've identified these items, and these are not all the items, there are items on here such as downtown business development, downtown, you know, redevelopment, those are things that aren't really necessarily Public Works related, so I haven't listed those. But these are all things, these are the things that are Public Works related. Each and every one of these things has a direct impact on my department, and frankly, each and one of these things also has a direct impact on the potential budget. I can point to two or three of these, and, and, well, about four of them, and come up with almost $75 million worth of projects. So there's, there's big money just in these few bullet points that council has decided that you at least want to investigate, and, and, and I'm coming here tonight to kind of prod you along towards making some decisions, because budgeting is right around the corner. Those initiatives that you've identified are going to require new financial resources if you want to move forward with that. And, and I don't see how they're going to not require those resources in the form of probably increased property taxes. And those are, those are decisions you, as a council, need to make to determine the city's future. And again, you know, balancing the past, the needs of the past, and the current, and the future generations. The mayor's not here tonight, so I will speak for him, and, and I, he will say that he's very proud of the fact that the city has had low property taxes for many, many years, very proud of that fact. And that is a really good thing that everyone can be proud of, and that can be the community's identity, is to, is to be more modest and more cautious with regards to change, and more fiscally lean, and say that that's who we are, and we have a great downtown, and we have a great town right now, and, you know, we, we'd love to do these things, but we just can't afford them. And there's nothing wrong with saying that, and so I, I think we need to put that out there. The other thing is to say, hey, nope, it's time, and, and we need to bring this, this city to a whole different level, and we need to do river enhancements, or we need to do, you know, something with the depot pond, we need to do something, you know, we're going to be more bold, that's going to require revenue. And, and that's where council's going to have to stand up and say, we want to do these things, and it's going to require revenue, because those things are not going to happen without revenue. So I guess, part of this slide is, we're, we as a, as a department, we as a city, have to come to you with budgeting. And I go back to 2012 through 2016, engineering came forth with this idea of a stormwater utility, and for five years, council was hesitant to provide any funding towards that effort. And, and it was, we didn't want to raise taxes, we don't want to put that burden on, on residents. It was finally in 2017 that we got $300,000 that was kind of devoted towards stormwater. Then 2018, we did the same thing again, and we actually issued bonding, if you require, now, now we have bonds that are, that are dedicated towards stormwater. Again, $300,000 towards stormwater, and you did $200,000 towards personnel, and another $100,000 towards streets. So it's literally only in the last couple of years that council has said, let's go ahead and increase revenues in order to fund these projects. And these are values of $300,000 or $600,000, and I wasn't kidding when I told you that if you take the bridge, and you take the dam, and you take the river, and you take the downtown, you know, bike path and other pedestrian improvements, you, you could easily be $60 million, $70 million of projects. That's, that's not in left field. So there was a struggle to get $600,000 in 2018. I, I, I challenge you guys to make a decision, do you want to fund, you know, X over the next 20 years? Because, you know, let's do the, the bridge as an example, or the river as an example, the river is probably $10 million, $10 to $12 million. You could do that a million dollars a year for the next 10 years, you could do it in pieces, just like we're doing right now, but that's million dollars a year for the next 10 years, which is, you know, three times the amount that we've done in the last couple of years, just for the river. And that's not counting the streets, that's not counting the personnel, the additional police officer, everything else. So I guess I just challenge you guys to decide, and hopefully give us direction as we enter budget season, you know, what we, what we want to do. It's a, it's a challenge for us on our end to prepare plans and projects, or to do studies. I'll point to the remodeling, we spent $100,000 on remodeling plans for this building. Take a lot of staff time to do that, and if, if, you know, those projects don't go forward, we don't have a big staff, we, we need to use our resources as efficiently as we can. So this brings me to kind of this slide, I mean, there are either kind of two options, there needs to be, yes, we're going to set these goals, and we're going to do these priorities, and staff, you need to figure out what kind of financial resources in order to, to meet those policies, or you say, nope, this is it, this is the limit of our financial resources, we are willing to raise taxes, you know, $100,000, or we're willing to raise taxes zero, or we're willing to raise taxes a million, and that's it. And then, staff, you figure out what projects can be fit within that, within that goal. So and it, there's, really, the two approaches, you know, this is traditionally how we've always done it, is option number two, and again, I, I ask if you guys can, sometime in the next couple of weeks, say, we're willing to raise property taxes X in order to fund these projects, or we're saying, we are not willing to raise property taxes right now, and staff, this is, this is the revenues that you have, and you need to develop your budget to fit within these revenues. That way, we know exactly where we stand as we go into budget season. It'd be a lot more efficient for all of us. Again, my, my budget especially is greatly impacted by these strategic decisions. All of those projects are directly related to Public Works that have to be budgeted and studied, and, and we, we have to do a lot of work on those projects. So again, I would challenge and say this is a critical junction right now for city council to determine the future direction of the city. You know, there's nothing wrong with saying we want to keep taxes low, we have rate increases coming, we have, you know, everything else, that, that's perfectly fine, it's just, we either got to kind of commit to that and not go through the effort of studies and to not fund those projects, or to say, yep, we are all in, and we're going to fund this project, and we're going forward on it. So. And that's what I have.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Gary?
I do, Alan, of course.
Susan?
I have a list, but I'll keep it short. So when we go through strategic planning, which we have, and we come up with all these grandioses, like, wouldn't it be great to stabilize a riverbank? The big question I've always had is how do we fund this? I mean, it's great to say, we want to do this. Who's going to pay for it has always been the answer, or the question that we always have had. And so it's one of those chicken or the eggs kind of scenarios. So in my mind, what we've done for the seven and a half years I've been on council is we do piecemeal, we do the little tiny bits we can afford here and there. And so how do you make a plan for something that's massive? And that's always been something that I, I've been very perplexed about, we're not talking about a $50,000 plan, we're talking about a $50 million plan. How do you do that?
So there's two things there. One, staff is very good at handling the minimum resources that we have. We do excellent job of providing really good service, given the amount of tax revenue that we, we bring in. I mean, we really do, and I'm, I'm going to challenge anyone who says that we don't provide good services in this town. So being tasked with saying, you know, this is all you have for revenue, and do your best with it, we can do that. To more directly answer your question, from my perspective, the problem comes in with this. It's great to create a plan, it's great to create this master plan, but I'll sit around and ask the table, are all of you comfortable with the bridge plan that was created 10 years ago? Or would you like to re-study that and look at different options? Some of you probably will say, well, I had no involvement in that plan, I've never really even looked at the plan, so I probably would want to open it back up again and re-study it. So we could go through the effort of studying something, but if So we could go through the effort of studying something, but if you aren't willing to start funding it, and it's just a study, then the next council eight years from now is going to want to come in and say, "Well, that was a great study, but we need to redo something else." And that's, that's the challenge that, from staff, I've seen my whole career. You need to have ownership in it and then, and then bring it forward. And I'll point right up the river to St. Charles, and Scott can probably tell me when it was. But it was 20 some odd years ago that their council said, "We need to do the Red Gate, Red Gate Bridge. We need to start setting aside money for it," which they did back then. And then every council since then has had this little pot of money that's been growing and growing and growing, so they have something tangible that they can point to and say, "We're going to do Red Gate Bridge," and that's the pot of money that we got. And I can tell you, they didn't do a study 20 some odd years ago, maybe a conceptual study, because they knew where it was, it was going at Red Gate. But they didn't do the real study until they actually had enough money to move the project forward at that point in time.
And one of the things that I would point to that, of course, is the wastewater utility. Is, we studied it to death, and then we just decided not to do anything. And so that's one that I can absolutely see where, you know...
Stormwater?
That's what I meant.
Stormwater, yeah.
Stormwater, that was the word, I couldn't, yeah, stormwater. The next question I would have is, I know that we have, as a council, subsidized electric rates through other, we haven't raised the rates as much as we should have to keep up, to keep pace.
I don't know that I agree with that, but go ahead.
And the same thing with like, things like brush collection, things like that. We've helped to subsidize some costs. We've been able to do that because we've been a home rule community. What will happen, how will this impact your budget, I guess is the bottom line question, if suddenly we are not a home rule community anymore? So you're looking at these numbers plus what? What is the X factor?
That gets beyond me, that's almost a little what Peggy was talking about in her presentation to you guys. I have to point to her as far as overall city impacts. The enterprise funds are still the enterprise funds, they're not as impacted by home rule. The revenues which come into the general fund, which are impacted by home rule, are things like the home rule sales tax, and I think the gasoline tax, and there's a natural gas tax. Those are all things that we would not have revenues for on the general fund side of things. So there are impacts, I just, she would be better to speak to those.
Okay. So you don't know where that hits your budget?
Well, it'll hit my budget on the general fund side, certainly on the roads and the streets and all of that side. But on the water side or on the electric or wastewater side, that's still funded by the rate pairs.
Okay.
So there's, there's a separation there.
Okay.
And with regards to electric, oh, you want to speak to that?
I'll just, thank you. While you're on the subject. It's, it's kind of a funny, it's a weird dichotomy to see the two of you together.
Yeah. And I'm wearing heels, too. I think what you're thinking of is when we implemented the home rule sales tax back in 2014, so for four years, we supplemented the electric utility with that home rule sales tax.
Right.
And we stopped that midway through last year.
Okay. Okay, yes, that's what I was questioning.
Going forward now, the losses that would impact the general fund.
Okay. Okay, thanks Peggy. I just wanted to make sure I knew that correctly. And I think those were all of my questions.
I'd give you a better answer, but I'm going to wait until November 7th.
Our budget has to be finished by then.
I understand that. The impact may happen then.
I, I said it and I'll say it again, I think we should have a stormwater utility. I think it's important, we have, that's, the biggest complaint we get from people is they're flooding. We need to start paying closer attention, and you pay close attention to it already. And that money is coming out of the general fund. Taxpayers are still paying for it. I think it should be a shared cost, and I think it should just, everyone pays for it.
That's probably a completely separate conversation, because council last year elected to use general property taxes to fund the bonds, which were then used for the specific purpose of stormwater and sewer separation. So, we, we have quasi, in a way, essentially established a stormwater utility, just in a different format.
Right. And I think we should formalize it and pay attention to it, closer attention.
I agree with you. That's right.
So I guess that was my, my soapbox tonight, was to try and, and encourage you guys to think about the strategic initiatives that you've identified, and as a council, decide if those are things you really want to accomplish, and if they are, how are you going to fund them? Or if you want to adopt, you know, the more modest approach, which, again, I don't think there's anything wrong with that, and saying that, you know, we need to be more conservative, and this is what we're going to do going forward.
Gary, it was helpful, Gary. Thank you.
And I'll chime in, I mean, I think you really bring that point up again as a good reminder to us. That's, I think, always been the struggle with every council that I've been around or as long as I've lived in the city, is people have great ideas, but it's trying to put the plan together with the funding to make it happen. And that's something that's really been a struggle, the time that I've been on the council, is we've talked about it, we've talked about it. If we would have had a funding mechanism ready to go, and we decided where we were going to set a bridge, we probably have another bridge already.
First discussion fifteen years ago. So you'd be darned close to being having a bridge right now.
Yeah, it, you know, and hindsight is great, but, you know, we really have to do, I mean, we have to make that decision, what we really value, and then, you know, make the decisions and move forward with it.
But won't some things be out of our hands if we don't? I mean, that's what, like the riverbank stabilization, it continues to crumble with or without us. So, that's something that you have to prioritize and say, "We've got to do something. We live in a watershed, what the heck," you know? But, you know, you can't keep kicking it down the road by saying, "Well, maybe next year we can come up with a way to fund this, or maybe the next year we can come up with a way to fund this." And that's what we seem to do a lot of, because we have been very conservative in how we assess property tax. And so, I, I look at the list of things and sit through the strategic planning and going, "Oh, okay, this is all great, and I can't get this time back in my life, but I know we can't afford to fund any of this stuff, so why are we doing this again?" And, and it really gets frustrating, so...
And I'll bring up the last topic is roads, and I go back to that, and that we are, we are in a significant issue right now with our roadway funding. We need, we need considerably more funds for our roads.
And I do, your email today, I support that, about, you know, taking care of the roads today and doing the maintenance on it. It's pennies on the dollar. So if you get negative feedback from that, we have to get beyond the negative feedback and continue to do that.
Marty, I think you wrote nice.
No, I was just going to say, based on a lot of things that are outside of our control, we may be having bold decisions...
Trust upon.
...to have to make.
Yeah, the other direction.
Well, I mean, one of them, as you were going through one of these things with water and potential rates and all that, sell it. What's keeping, sell the water department. Other places are going for, for...
Privatization?
Privatization. No, I'm not, I'm not saying...
I'll, I'll just point you to a few communities that you don't want to hear that.
I am not saying to do it, but there are, when there are different options, you deal with the hand that you have been dealt.
I don't know that there are many successful options that have done that, though. That's the problem.
But what I'm saying is, if there are bold decisions to be made, other people could make different decisions about the boldness of what you're trying to accomplish. It might not be agreeable, but there are times when you're trying to figure out where the money's coming from, there are consequences to those. And you figure out and you weigh those decisions about how you want to fund these things. And some things, the bold option might not be the palpable one.
You privatized one of utilities, then you have no control over the rates that those utilities charge.
I'm, I'm not saying, I'm pointing out that when you're talking about bold decisions, people could start throwing out bold decisions without fully thinking through consequences.
Mark? Yeah, I appreciate you putting us on the spot, honestly. And, I mean, we absolutely need to take care of the things that if we don't do anything about it, they're going to fail. So, water, electric, streets, we have to figure that one out. And then, add on to that, the things that, looking back at the community survey, what does a community want? I mean, that's, that's why we did that. Look at that, what do they want? And then figure it out. Fine, if everybody wants a second bridge, despite they didn't want a second bridge, then start putting away money and their kids can have a second bridge.
Yeah, it's a generational thing.
It's, and like you said, you're thinking 20, 50, 100 years. Well, we need to, again, like St. Charles did, we need to think in that way, and we need to start setting money aside. The problem is, to do the things that everybody wants, including the community based on the survey, it's going to cost money. And if, if anybody can figure out a way to do it for free, then we're all ears and, and we'll do everything we can for free, but there's not much we do for free.
Anybody else? Great 12 minutes.
Thank you. That store's passed. I made the next store's passed.
Yeah, it's almost time for the next one.
Yeah. Round two. Okay, let's move right on to 13, project status.
World's fastest project status. We have, our city council meeting is Tuesday next week because Monday is Labor Day, and therefore we will have no committee of the whole meeting next week. Also, it does not appear that we'll have a plant commission meeting on September 5th due to a lack of complete items for that agenda, so it does not look like that, that meeting will be held. Also wanted to let everybody know that Tammy Presley from Northwestern Medical contacted us. As you recall, the mobile stroke unit was brought here and demonstrated for everyone, and also, there's been stories of, you know, lives being saved by the availability of that. Now Northwestern Medical would like to take that to the next level and make sure that people recognize the symptoms of stroke so that they can contact and be put in, in contact with the mobile stroke unit as soon as possible, since time is of the essence. And so Tammy's going to be coming out here in a future meeting in October to do a brief presentation on how to recognize the symptoms of stroke, and also to hear from you, your ideas on how best to communicate this to the community so that we can really get the word out there. That's all that I have, unless you have any questions for me. Anything that I was going to talk about projects was pretty much gone over in all of these presentations.
Mark? The only thing I was going to ask, one, I appreciate Gary, the, this kind of goes back to Gary a little bit, appreciate the information about the electrical charges over the past couple of years. That was very informative. What happened on, was it Sunday? I don't even remember anymore. Because that was such a...
Microphone.
It seemed larger than I would expect something to be.
So without getting too technical, Friday we had a vendor in to make repairs to our substations down in Fern. And in order to make repairs to the north substation, we had to transfer load from the north substation down to our south substation. And literally as the lineman was locking the gate, he witnessed the bird flying into the south substation. But we'd also transferred all the load to the south substation already. So when that substation went out, we, we, we lost more load than we normally would have because we had load transferred to that substation. Then we had to reshift all the load back up to the north substation. So that was on Friday. That whole exercise of having to do that caused that vendor to not be able to finish his work on Friday. Then we're entering a weekend, and typically on a weekend, you don't see very high loads, that's just normal. So, they left, the, the system was left in a not normal configuration, which is not something that, it's not normal, but it's also not something we don't do, it's not unheard of. We will, we will leave the system in unusual configuration every once in a while due to circumstances like this. So when Sunday happened, we got to the afternoon, and all the electricity that was being used, one of our protective relays, which basically is a device that protects transformers, detected that there's potentially going to be an overload, that protective relay opened circuit, caused the, caused the circuit to shut down to protect the transformer. And then because the situation, the system was switched differently, we had to reswitch the system around again to transfer load, all kind of dealing back in the down and off back. That's why it took longer, because we had to redistribute load through the system before we could recharge it back up. So, that's the kind of the more detailed explanation.
Thank you.
If you want to see pictures of the blue heron, I have them.
No, thank you.
Crispy.
Do we have any others?
Others?
Then move, will you, John?
Side of.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.